It's on.
Okay, good evening. Welcome everyone. My apologies for a rather lengthy closed session item this evening, but council needs to care of business. So again, apologies for that. We will now continue with our open session. I'll announce the regular joint city council American Canyon Fire Protection District meeting for August seventeen twenty two and one. Open session is open. Going to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. We may we have a flag to share please. Please follow me to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call please.
Councilmember Abdolmas.
Here.
Councilmember Orio.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. Thank you all. You now have a report on closed session confirmation reportable action. Mr. Ross.
I do not see Mr. Ross.
He just sent me a text message that he's having difficulty getting in.
We'll read to that one.
Cherry, can you resend him? Please, a link.
Very good. We're moving now to city clerk's announcement pursuant to government code five four nine five two point three. It is a state in the agenda. Proclamations and presentation this evening. We have proclamation retirement of K nine Chase.
Mayor Garcia, I have we should have.
It's coming up.
Greenberg, I'm gonna move him over. There we go.
Very good. I've just
Thank you.
Waiting for my slow computer to respond.
Good evening. K nine Chase should be on as well. I don't know.
Do you have an email? A name of who's gonna have K nine Chase?
Should be under Eric Olson.
Okay, let me move him over as well.
Okay. Good evening, Chief Greenberg.
Evening. How are you all?
Well, a special evening for
Hey, here we go.
All right.
All right.
So, good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight we're congratulating K nine Chase on his seven years of service for the American Canyon Police Department as our K nine down here. Just a little backstory on K nine Chase. I was enough back in two thousand fourteen to well, I saw the need for another K nine in American Canyon and sergeant down there. And so I worked with the chief at that time to get another K nine onboard for the police department and that was Chase and he's been here for seven years now and it's my pleasure to be here at the at the beginning of his career and now at the end of his career celebrating his retirement. So congratulations and Chase and Sergeant Olson for all your hard work and dedication to American Canyon Police.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Well, that I I'm very pleased and honored to read the proclamation, City of American Canyon proclamation recognizing the retirement of K nine Chase, August seventeen twenty twenty one. Whereas police dogs referred to as K nines are a crucial law enforcement resource that helps to apprehend dangerous criminals, search buildings and open deals for offenders and use their keen sense of smell to locate narcotics. And whereas American Canyon Police Department uses these uses these highly trained K nines to help keep the residents of American Canyon safe. And whereas one of American Canyon's veteran K nine partners Chase, a eighty nine pound nine year old Belgian Malinois, who spent his entire law enforcement career in American Canyon. And where K nine Chase came to the department from Holland at the age of one before being partnered with his handler at the age of two. Where since joining the American Canyon Police Department, K nine Chase has assisted officers with over felony apprehensions, over seventy felony apprehensions, and is also assisted in over one hundred and twenty narcotic fines. And to include drugs such as dangerous drugs such as heroin, that's a deadly and cocaine. And whereas as a police K nine Chase and his handler Officer Olson trained for over one thousand nine hundred hours throughout their seven years partnership. And whereas as a seven year veteran of American Canyon Police Department, K nine Chase has been to countless community events or demonstrations where he enjoys tremendous popularity with children. And whereas K nine Chase handler has recently promoted to the rank of sergeant and has been assigned to supervise a shift at the American Canyon Police Department. And K nine Chase will be retiring from police work to live the remainder of his years with Sergeant Olson's family and their pet York. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Leon Garcia, City of American Canyon, to hereby thank police K nine Chase and his handler Sergeant Olson for the years of service to the city and wish them well in their next endeavors. Congratulations and thank you both for your service and a special thanks to our good friend Chase. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor and the city. I really, really greatly appreciate it.
Enjoyed our retirement, Chase.
Yeah.
He is.
He looks like he's relaxed.
Yeah, he's in good hands.
See that we get another K nine now too or what happens next to Mr. Olson? Does he get another two dogs, one to keep at home and one to work with?
Yeah, Chief, would you like me to answer that?
Yeah, we already have another K nine down here. So when officers get promoted as sergeant, unfortunately, they're no longer allowed to have K nine as a companion or partner.
Congratulations to you and Chase.
But it looks like they have a very good partnership though.
Absolutely. You guys are in very good hands with the two new officers that just came in. So incredible dogs and handlers.
All right, very good. Always thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, should we go back to closed session report from Mr. Ross?
Ross is here. Okay, yes.
Hey, good, Mayor and council. You adjourned, you convened an open session at five thirty two P M to address the matter agendas for closed session consideration involving the city. After asserting there was no public comment, you did so at five thirty three P M. You also added as a second matter to be considered after the regular council meeting, a personnel matter under government code section sixty four nine fifty seven with respect to the city manager for the written report upon return from closed session, which concluded at seven oh two. I will do a written report under the provisions of government code section fifty four nine fifty seven point one. That would conclude the report.
Any questions from council? Very none. Thank you, Mr. Ross. And I'll move on to our next item, presentation Napa Valley Community Organizations Active in Disaster.
And for that item, we have Celeste Quinta. I'm not sure I'm saying that last name correctly.
I have to bear with me. My computer is very slow this evening.
Oh, here we go. Okay, here she's coming over.
I don't have anything on my screen yet, so it's loading it up. I'll probably need some technical assistance with this. I'm the only one. We're about halfway there.
All right. So hello, everyone. I'm Celeste Junta. Hold on just a moment. Mayor Garcia is having technical difficulty. Just we'll be with you in just one moment. Sorry.
Okay.
No, it's just this is going very slow.
I can hear you in real time over there.
Yeah, I just don't have any. I don't have any video right now. Almost there. There we go. Thank you. Now we got it.
All right. Are you ready for me now?
Yes, I am all. Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. I am Celeste Junta. I am the Director for Community Organizations Active in Disaster for Napa County. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be here today to talk more about our collective work in two thousand twenty. I have not had the opportunity to meet most of you in person, but I have worked extensively with Mayor Garcia as well as some of your staff in American Canyon, particularly Creighton Wright and his staff have been incredible partners through all of the work that we did in two thousand twenty. So I'm really humbled and privileged to be able to work with all of the incredible non-governmental agencies as well as municipalities as the Director of Coad. It's an incredible group and together we really weathered a very difficult two thousand twenty. And so I want to share some information with you about that. And so I'm going to share my screen and hopefully this will all work and everyone can see.
Well, we're looking forward to your presentation.
Okay, so is that up and everyone can see it? Okay. All right, terrific. All right. So today what I'd like to cover is provide a little bit of background on Coad, since many of you may not be as familiar with as Mayor Garcia is. Provide highlights from our Coad's two thousand twenty coordinated response events and then also talk about the initiatives that we're looking forward to in two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty two. So kind of where we've been and where we've headed. Coad's mission is to develop and enhance partnerships for communication, coordination and collaboration amongst the whole community, including nonprofits and faith based organizations, government agencies in the private sector during all phases of disaster. And currently, right now, we're operating in all phases of disaster. We're working on preparedness response as well as recovery from the two thousand twenty wildfires. So it's a busy time. So Coad's role is to really serve as the organizing body that provides leadership and coordination for the non-governmental response. And it's important to recognize that we complement government efforts. We don't duplicate government efforts. We look at where those gaps and services are and we develop subcommittees around those to deliver services to the community, particularly vulnerable populations that have need. So we focus in three areas. We focus on communication and in our role in the county's emergency operation center, we have a seat and we're because of that, we're able to provide vetted and very timely information to Coad agencies, which really enhances our ability to take, keep situational awareness and provide services to the community. We make sure that we're tightly coordinated. We want to avoid duplicating services and we want to identify gaps and services. And that allows us to maximize the services that we deliver to the community. And we really collaborate. Our subcommittees reach common goals and solutions, and that's a big focus of the work that we do together. So just kind of a big overview of our current operation. In the last two years, Coad's grown tremendously. You know, you have a pandemic and two wildfires and you have to kind of build an infrastructure to address all of those needs. So in Coad, we follow incident command principles to some degree because it does keep us tightly coordinated and allows us to really maximize the delivery of services to the community. So we start with our executive committee, which is our incident command and actually Creighton Wright from the American Canyon is part of our executive committee. And then I am the Coad Director and I serve as the E O C liaison and disaster coordinator. And you know, I started at Coad, we had a few subcommittees. We did a little preparedness work today. We have three pretty robust operating units. We have a preparedness unit and our operating unit that Mayor Garcia is very involved in that does education and outreach. We do training. We neighborhood resilience through our map and neighborhood program, and I'll talk more about that towards the end of the presentation. And we also do shelter support work for vulnerable populations who end up in our shelters. Then we do also have long term recovery, particularly from the two two thousand twenty wildfires. Today is the one year anniversary of the L N U lightning fire. So we are busy with disaster case management and helping those who don't have the resources to recover as best as they can to the same level that they were before the fires. And then the core part of our work has been our nine response subcommittees that have been very active for the last eighteen months addressing needs primarily for COVID nineteen, but also for a short period of time, the two two thousand twenty wildfires. And within that group, I'm going to kind of highlight the work each of these subcommittees has done over the past. The focus of this presentation is really March to December of two thousand twenty, but some of it has spilled into two thousand twenty one. So um, I just wanted to also highlight a couple of things about Coad's membership. When I first started with Coad in June of two thousand nineteen, we had about fifty plus members. Today we have over a hundred and twenty members and many of I think all but a handful have completed our new membership charter. And of that hundred and twenty seventy are actively engaged in Coad coordinated efforts, primarily nonprofits and faith based organizations, but many of the cities have staff that sit on our subcommittees. So it really is a tremendous organization. And we asked when we did our after action report, what do members value? They value that timely vetted consistent information that we work to deliver. They value the fact that we provide coordinated resources and that we provide an opportunity to collaborate for a very high impact response as well as being able to quickly mobilize to support the community. So I mentioned that we follow incident command principles and that's been very important for us because when you have this many disasters going on and this many things happening in the community, it's very important for us to stay focused on Coad's mission and what we can effectively deliver to the community. So we do set operating objectives. They kind of relate right to our mission. You know, we communicate and maintain situational awareness. We ensure coordinated efforts. We support our subcommittees in offering those supportive services by providing research and and resources. We support the county in the protection of public health. We do a lot of work related to initially to COVID testing. And now we're doing participating in a lot of the vaccine collaborative outreach. We, as I mentioned, we have our long term recovery group responding to the two thousand twenty wildfires. We have a volunteers on call program and we make sure that we support those volunteers. We promote community preparedness efforts and that includes through training, our neighborhood resilience efforts as well as shelter support and we promote equity and outreach and services for vulnerable populations, including language access. And one of the areas that I'll talk a little bit more about is our language access project, which is finally moving forward at a stronger clip. And we are looking at making sure that we have language access resources available to everyone in the community, not just necessarily English and Spanish speaking. And American Canyon tends to be our most diverse community in Napa County. So it's very important that we have a very comprehensive language access program. So I'm going to shift now and to talk about some of the impact of our collected efforts from Coad. And these numbers are based on an after after action survey that we conducted in December two thousand twenty. So it really encapsulates the work that we did between March and December two thousand twenty. As I mentioned, a lot of that was focused on COVID nineteen. March to December two thousand twenty, based on the agencies that were able to complete the survey, we were spending on Coad collective efforts eight thousand two hundred and thirty four hours a month. All of those agencies that were involved in those nine subcommittees. So it was really very substantial. That translates to almost three million dollars. That was kind of an in kind gift to the community. For the wildfire, it was a much shorter period of time with fewer agencies engaged and really focused up valley. And so on top of that, those monthly hours, we put in over three months, another six thousand six hundred six thousand seven hundred and sixty one hours. So very substantial hours being submitted by our all of our collective work together. I'm just gonna check. There's a question. Right, I'm not gonna answer that right now. All right, so um what's really important though is not just those numbers that I just shared with you, but the work that was behind those numbers. And so I'm going to highlight some of the work of our Coad's subcommittees and I'm going to highlight the ones to start that had the biggest impact, the biggest numbers, but that's not because not necessarily makes them the most important. So our emergency financial assistance group was incredibly important. It really was. And I'd like to just give a special shout out to the Napa Valley Community Foundation for making many of these financial assistance programs possible. But this subcommittee looked at the the landscape of need and looked at the landscape of available resources and were able to direct and assist seven thousand people who made inquiries. So there's about a dozen agencies involved in this subcommittee, including city and county employees. So in terms of COVID nineteen assistance, four point eight million to thirty three household, thirty three hundred households was distributed over the course of the program from American Canyon, we had seventy two households. Today, it the Coad General Meeting, we just had a presentation on the E R A P program, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program Housing is Key Through the State. And I looked up your numbers because they do have a dashboard where we can look up numbers. From American Canyon, ninety one applications have been submitted for a total and requested benefits of nine hundred and fifty one thousand. Of those sixteen have been served for a total of one hundred and forty two thousand. So the average benefit that's been received by American Canyon residents is close to eighty nine hundred dollars for that housing is key, that new program, which had a kind of a slow start, but is definitely moving forward. So that's an important program and it looks as though there's quite a few more American Canyon residents in the queue. So another huge area and that we've been involved in is food insecurity and access. And since March two thousand twenty, we've been tracking food distributions to identify gaps and avoid duplication of services and we have focused primarily on grocery programs because those were the programs that sustained families through the worst parts of COVID nineteen. We were looking at sustained need increasing fourfold from pre COVID nineteen periods, including Napa and American Canyon. One of the things that we found is that we really needed more localized subcommittees. So we had our food insecurity and access subcommittee and then we had subgroups in American Canyon, Napa and Up Valley. And American Canyon, we did identify gaps and services. And so we increased some distributions in American Canyon, which was very important. The next slide I'll show you will kind of dramatically show some of the need that unfolded. So we also developed a grocery delivery program using coordination between numerous subcommittees. And we were delivering food to about seventy five residents a week in American Canyon and Napa. I think one of the important things to realize is that many of these people, we know, we see an increase this large that many of the people were accessing the food pantries for the first time. So it really was incumbent on us to do a lot of outreach so that people felt comfortable accessing the services. Many people were didn't feel they were, they should or felt that they could be if they were undocumented, they were concerned, but the requirements were definitely relaxed. So all people had to do was give the number of people in their household and their zip code. So there were also meal programs and there was a pretty robust meal program with the school district as well as the Boys and Girls Club as well as grabbing go meals from Salvation Army. So food insecurity was a huge issue and continues to be very important. This chart kind of shows you the number of households in thousands served from each month from March to December two thousand twenty. You can see we had a huge peak in May where seventeen thousand households accessed food and grocery programs. So in May, the orange is American Canyon and that equated to about thirty eight hundred individuals in American Canyon accessed food programs during May. And it was a huge, huge everywhere. As we got to December, it started leveling off at about eight hundred households per month. And in June, we had about seven hundred households per month and it seems as though we're evening out now to about a hundred and thirty five households a week. So food insecurity and that compares to a total of three hundred a month at a peak in March. So we are still seeing increased or continued food insecurity and people accessing these programs, but it's I think as we see more people go back to work and we see more of the rental assistance funding come in, people will be less dependent on the grocery programs. The another huge area for us was volunteers on call. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. We developed a very robust database of three hundred and thirty five deployable volunteers. We supported the testing sites and the vaccine sites, tremendous number of hours on those food distribution and delivery. We coordinated with N B T A. And now we're gearing up for shelter support work and I know that Creighton is also involved in our shelter support subcommittee. So that was another huge part of our work in two thousand twenty. As we look at public information and outreach, we developed a lot of different communications to support the community and amplify county messaging. We partnered with the county, for example, on the beat COVID door hanger and made bookmarks out of them as well. We did a lot of support and mental health services as well as financial assistance programs. So there was a lot of outreach and communication through Coad. Just a couple more subcommittees I'd like to highlight because they did a lot of work in American Canyon and that is our access and functional needs group. We identified a network where we could reach twelve thousand people who were very vulnerable, either older adults or people with mobility issues or some kind of other access and functional needs. And so we were able to start reaching them and we started sending out regular preparedness and resource information and we turned that into an annual campaign. Mental and spiritual health was another huge focus. They continue to do outreach. They did suicide prevention training. They did a lot of outreach related to making sure that there was a if there was abuse going on in the home, that there were opportunities for people to share that information. And we did provide caseworkers with trauma informed care workshops. We have our last one for two thousand twenty coming up at the end of August. And this is a little old, so we've done closer to almost two hundred caseworkers have gone through trauma informed care workshops. Childcare in American Canyon, Napa and Up Valley was a huge issue, particularly during the early stages of COVID nineteen, where essential workers and frontline workers needed access to childcare in order to be able to do their work and deliver services. So C R C led a So CRC led a group in our childcare subcommittee. They were able to connect a hundred-plus essential workers to care. They were connecting families for vouchers, and they gave grants to eighty-six providers so that they could stay in business, which was really important. We lost a lot of providers during. Those early stages of COVID nineteen. So more subcommittee highlights. We did a lot of animal welfare work and pet food drives. We partnered with NVTA to make deliveries to homes, including for different resources like toilet paper and adult diapers. So and we also have Rutherford Grange where it's basically kind of a thrift store, but it's free for low-income individuals impacted by COVID nineteen and fire survivors. So moving into our initiatives for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, we continue our ongoing COVID response, primarily that's focused around vaccine outreach right now. Our Language Access Plan for All Phases of Disaster is going into a new stage where we're going to be doing a lot more. Primary data gathering. So we'll be looking at some empathy interviews and making sure that we connect with people in American Canyon as well as do a community survey and speaking to some key people in municipalities and making sure that we hit all stakeholders. Twenty twenty wildfire long-term recovery continues. Preparedness has become a huge part of what we do, and I know Mayor Garcia has been involved in this. We developed our Coad Preparedness Calendar as part of creating that culture of preparedness. We got that launched in July. That was a lot more work than we anticipated. And we also have our Neighborhood Resilience Group, which is our, where we're using the Map Your Neighborhood framework, where we're trying to bring neighborhoods together to build relationships as well as identify the resources and vulnerabilities in their neighborhoods. And we have meetings coming up towards the end of this month. August twenty-sixth is a, I've been sharing it in our Coad Updates, is a. A class, an introductory class. We've got about thirty neighborhoods involved right now. So we want to continue growing this initiative because we do believe that connectedness is more important during a disaster than getting pallets of water to people. Because connectedness means is much stronger indicator of recovery and survival from a disaster. So I'm just kind of highlighting our Preparedness Calendar. We're in August right now. And with the calendar is kind of created around the seasonal. Seasonal disasters that we can face in Napa County. So August is focused on wildfire preparedness and red flag and PSPS awareness. And today is, we're beginning a PSPS event, and we are walking into a red flag warning throughout, at least for some of the Napa and Upper Valley. So looks a little different on our website, but I encourage you to take a look at Preparedness Calendar. And that's it from Coad for now. Here's my contact information. If you've got any questions, you can reach me or I can take questions now, whatever works.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. You know, it's an incredibly valuable asset to all communities. I think the key word that just mentioned was connectedness. This efforts of this organization makes everything from the entire parameters of the Napa County. And it's been great work put together. Firstly, myself, I've been involved sometime after the October seventeen fires, when the shelter closed here in American Canyon. Started meeting with the group and recognizing that the conversation was. Public safety handles things like putting out fires and evacuating people. But then there's all these unmet needs for folks when they get to a shelter or they don't have a house, even some are even living in their cars. So this was an effort to put together all the information to support those families throughout that recovery time, that disaster. Certainly, the asset that I recognize in the process as well is how do you connect with people? See, this school system is one way you connect with the. Communities where people get support also, also the local government through all many, many agencies. So the value of Coad is being able to have that communication link from one in Napa County to the other. And with, at the same time, having a, the message is consistent throughout. And without making more efficient by not replicating things. And how do you, oh, you have a conversation about what are the needs and who's providing it, how do you link that together? You put together a, a subcommittee on that issue, and I was very happy to work on the Preparedness Fund and still am involved with it. Really appreciate Celeste, the work that you're doing. It's really made an incredible difference for a lot of communities. Going forward for us, I think the Preparedness. Information out there, Map Your Neighborhood, look at the assets in your neighborhood. I remember the. Twenty fourteen earthquake we experienced, being up in the middle of the night, we were out in the middle of the street, all his neighbors were. Is everybody okay? You know, how is somebody having, does grandma needs special care across the street? Anybody smell, smell gas out there? This is a way of putting together, it's really your strength in your neighborhood is your neighbors. And you put together a map and have that conversation. What would you do if? You know, if you're out of town and I smell gas, would you be okay if I turned off your gas heater? People generally say yes. But it's a way of reaching out and it builds a stronger neighborhood on other, other levels as well. Public safety, for example, neighborhood watch. So we built on that and would appreciate of the general meeting presentation today. That was, that was excellent.
Mayor Garcia, I have a hand raised. Mr. Ken Leary would like to make a comment.
Certainly.
Okay, go ahead, Ken.
Well, Ken. I was waiting for public comment, so.
Oh, you're a little early. Okay.
Right.
Turn you off and I'll bring you back on.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
I'd like to make sure that we. Present this information, if you agreeable, some of our service clubs in American Canyon, certainly our faith communities as well. I think this is information that needs to go out on a very broad basis to.
Yeah, I think your SOR Optimist Group and Kamani's have been huge contributors in American Canyon, and we've really appreciated their partnership at Coad, particularly, you know, with food access and supporting some of our other efforts. They have been big help. So a shout out to them.
Right on. Okay, well, thank you very much, Celeste, for your presentation.
Other questions?
Question, yes. Question, anything?
No, I think so. There are no questions from the audience here.
Thanks again.
Thank you again, and hopefully I will meet you all one day in person.
We will do that for your help. All right. So we'll move on to. Somewhere here. All right. Bear with me. And we'll move on now to. Public comment, the item about on the agenda.
Mayor Garcia, we received three comments, written comments on non-agenda items, two from Umberto Rodriguez on two different topics and one from Lisa Yee.
Ms. 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 Calphos, can you just say what the topics are rather than reading them, just so we know what the comment?
Sure. Umberto commented on parking issues at Toscana Drive and Silver Oak Road, and also on hazard pay, and Lacey Yee had commented on hazard pay.
Thank you.
And we do have Mr. Ken Leary with his hand up for this. Item, so. Go ahead, Ken.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, welcome.
Yeah, council and city staff, I have three things. And first, I want, the first one, I'd like to congratulate the city on the recycle water program and delivering that. However, I have to say I've been having problems. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I've been having problems. It seems as though. Public Works cannot send me emails to my email address. I've been trying to get water delivered and the schedule was changed from today to yesterday, and they sent an email and I couldn't get it. And that has happened a couple of times, things coming from Public Works or the Planning Department when I was trying to get information on, on. Sunrooms. They emails don't seem to come through. However, I do get emails from the city manager and the Park and Rec Department. And Public Works said they've had problems sending out emails to. SBG, SBC, global.net, and to Yahoo. So I, I'd like to get that resolved because now this is the second week I've not been able to get any water because I moved the tanks out today versus yesterday. So if we can get that kind of resolved, so I can, you know, get that taken care of. All right, so moving on, second thing. The land, the former landfill, there's been some talk about giving that area a name, you know, the landfill around Thompson's Hike and Bike Trail. And maybe, you know, we can come up or have a contest to name that. I think it would be pretty neat. I don't know what condition that is or whether it can be turned into a park. It would be really nice to be able to hike over it, around it. I love that southern end where there's this little alcove. So if that can be used for. Public use, we, it would be nice to have a dedication park, you know. The city was dedicated in nineteen ninety-two. Maybe we have a park and something put up to the, when we were incorporated. All right, moving right along. Number three, when will there be another update on the Watson Ranch project? I didn't see that on agendas or other. Is there going to be an update for Watson Ranch? And the progress or what's the stages? So those are my, my questions, and I thank you very much for opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll, the updates will be forthcoming. Thank you. Any other public speaker?
We do. I have. Okay, I have Cindy Beeterman. Go ahead, Cindy.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
I have a parrot right now, so talking time, so if those. Just a disclaimer. First, I wanted to shout out to Pam Phillips. I mean, I'm part of that water program as well. I just got my first delivery. My grass is thankful for that delivery. She, I had no problem. I mean, she was able to set me up, get me ready. I received the emails. I'm a Comcast.net. I don't know, maybe that's what Leary might want to check into. I don't know. But anyway, great program. Kudos to her. Kudos to the people. They were wonderful. And to switch my hat, let me put on my American Canyon troop support hat. I want to thank city manager, mayor, and the council for the flag lowering for Mimi West. I tell you, I went down there for seven, I met Brian, the city staff down there, who was lowering the flag. It was amazing. My parrot, not my smoke detector. But it was an amazing sunrise, and it was just peeking out of the clouds. And I challenge you, in my heart, it felt like that Mimi, that Ed West, that Philip West and Kyle had front row seat to that. You know, it was, it was heartfelt. It would be amazing if I could make mom a request that maybe you guys can close this meeting in the honor of the West family. I sent you guys the link, I believe, to her service, which is coming up this Friday. Also, and again, it's funny, you know, because twenty years later, right? It just seems, I, I know I have been stumbling with anxieties, with emotions and everything else, especially in today's times. You know, my heart goes out to the Afghanistan citizens right now. It is horrendous. You know, to see them falling from the airplane in their efforts or trying to get out of there is heartbreaking. It almost has remnants of the nine eleven, so to speak, but our troops. You know, I've actually have to hold my care packages because we don't know what they're doing, right? Because they're in harms, they branded the care packages are the least, but I mean, it's that volatile over there. Please, please keep all the troops in your hearts, in your thoughts, their families, and I mean, also, especially their families and the Blue Star families and the, you know, the Gold Star families. This has been a long try in twenty years for everybody. Please keep them in your, your prayers and your thoughts, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the thoughts, for sure.
You.
We have another speaker?
We do. We have a comment from Justin Hamilton Hall. Go ahead, Justin.
Hello.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for having me. Zoom. So. So you guys not go back to the chamber? We don't know what date is, how we're going to do, do the Zoom over there, but that's my comment. The second one. Our tree, we, a painting tree. I know that's going to happen soon. But I think our treat is, is not good, but I live in a corner, not thousands away. But that's my comment. So it's nice to see you, see you guys.
All right, I do. You're commenting on the state condition. Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, right. Mr. Holly is on top of that. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. He also asked when we're going to go back to chambers, so in-person meetings is how I understood the question. Do we have an answer for that or not yet? I know it keeps changing.
Yeah, I can just do a real quick update. We had hoped actually this evening would be that first time, but the combination of the Delta variant and some back order on, on equipment. We don't have a next date. We have completed some upgrades in council already. Good, a bit of work has already been completed. We're still waiting for these cameras and. And more importantly, we're kind of seeing where this Delta variant goes, that it's kind of throwing a wrench in, in everything. So we don't have, we don't have a new date. You know, we're going to have to play by years as things unfold with Delta variant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason, Holly.
Okay, thank you, Justin. I have no other hands raised. It's time.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll continue with our agenda. Next up is agenda changes.
Mr. 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 Mayor, the applicants for consent number nine have requested continuance to clarify information, and Chief Cahill has graciously indicated that it could be continued to August twenty-four as a consent item, as a special meeting for the city council. So I would request that that matter be continued to that date.
I was going to raise the same question, so I'm glad that our city attorney is on top of it. I, I would agree to, to put it on, to continue it. So we have a continue there. Well, let's have a. Motion second on that. I would take counsel member, vice chair's, this remark is a motion, is a motion. Yes. There's a second.
A second.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. We have.
Continuation of.
Continuation, yeah. And it was motioned by Mark and seconded right here.
Yes.
Washington Council, Washington Council member does that.
SDG Commerce, three, thirty Distribution Center project.
Thank you, and roll call vote. Councilmember Abudamos?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
We're voting to take it out of consent.
Continue it to August. To the next meeting, a special meeting.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington, Councilmember of Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you.
Also, Mr. Mayor, I received a text from Beth Mark.
Also, Mister Mayor, uh I received a a text from Beth Marcus who apparently didn't know how to raise her hand but wanted to make a public comment if it's not too late.
Certainly, we can accept.
Is she on?
Uh I hope so.
She's not.
We like to have the community participate, so certainly.
I don't see her in the zoom unless. I do not see her in the zoom unless she's a phone. Is she on by phone? There's a nine seven three number.
Well, why don't we continue all uh?
Here, here.
What goes to our agenda? Any calendar?
I tried.
If not, I'll accept the motion to accept the consent calendar uh with the session uh item. Don't move. The SDG Commerce, which has been continued.
A second.
Motion second roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamos?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Member Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes, okay. Thank you, counsel. We'll move on now to public hearings. Uh item ten, Taco Baja Cali design permit, appeal of the planning commission denial. Report.
We do. I'm moving over a few people. I have uh community development director Brent Cooper. William, he is on. Who else do they have on this?
Hi, hi. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm gonna set up my presentation.
So um William, I do not see the applicant Vanessa. Her name is not on the list.
Oh.
Um.
Um, well, we we did send her the the.
We sent it to her and and she'd asked about it a few times. So, okay, wait a second. It could be. Okay. I'm okay. I'm lowering hands until Mayor Garcia asks for public comment, but Vanessa, if you are in here, okay. I think she's just got a different name and I'm gonna move her over.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll begin. Uh this is the appeal to the tacos Baja Cali design permit application. Uh I want to start with the um an overview of our mobile service vendor ordinance. That's the ordinance that uh provides guidance on on food trucks, which is considered class two of the mobile service vendor ordinance. Um there are three different types of opportunities for food trucks to uh to start their business in the city. The first one is if they want to do business in the Green Island uh uh general industrial zone zoning district that's in the northwest side of town, close to Green Island Road. Uh the second option is to uh goes through our temporary outdoor promotion permit. And that that option uh limits a a food truck to operate for uh a temporary basis. And then uh there's the third option, which is to proceed with a design permit for a permanent location on private property. And that's the uh that's the option that the applicant selected for the uh Baja Cali food truck. Um here is a vicinity map of the uh project site. Uh the project site is is large. It's the uh uh site directly south of City Hall. It's the uh forty-two twenty-five Broadway Street, which also includes Hurst Firewood and Larry's Truck Toppers. Go ahead, was there a question? Um the the site is accessible from Broadway and uh but the lease area, if you see the little orange box, is the uh the place where the applicant is proposing to to locate her taco truck. Uh the lease area is four hundred and forty square feet. So here's a close up of the lease area. Um the uh the four hundred and forty square feet, it's about forty foot set back from the highway. Uh it's right next to the access point on Broadway and uh it includes a a small unpaved area for uh some parking spaces. Here is uh some photos of their truck. Uh it's uh it's uh main color is brown with multicolors uh in in the middle and the 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 picture on the bottom right is how it will look from the highway. Um more of the project description. So the the project is located within the Broadway District specific plan in the Business Park Zoning District. Uh I've already mentioned the uh design permit uh uh application. Uh the business hours is proposed to be um uh daily hours, seven days a week, and it's going to be operated by one to two employees. Um most of the uh food prep is done off-site and the truck maintenance, truck washing is done off-site. Uh the disposal of fats, oils and grease is also done off-site. So they have their food prep and food disposal at a at a commissary kitchen that's not on-site. Couple more of the features of the application. So the the uh taco truck would be um required to obtain a Napa County health license, and they also will be required to obtain a city business license. Uh the applicant has uh agreed to maintain the site free of garbage. Um and for advertising, there's no signs proposed for the site. They're relying on the visibility of the truck from the highway and just uh social media. Um there's no customer seating and it will be uh takeout food only. And uh lastly, the operation is not the is not going to do it on night sales, so it's daylight operational. So uh the application proceeded to the May twenty-seventh uh planning commission. Uh in public comment, we received two letters of support and two letters uh of uh opposition. Ultimately, the planning commission um decision was to deny the project as a four to one vote. Uh the planning commission cited uh findings of inconsistency with the Broadway District uh specific plan, our our general plan and our economic development uh plan. Uh so following the May twenty-seventh decision, the applicant has submitted an appeal uh on June seventeenth. And uh that's uh where closer to where we are today. Um. I, if the city council was to um reverse the planning commission decision, uh the project would be a considered categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as a a class one uh existing facilities and also as class five minor alterations to land. So uh before I get to the alternatives, I do want to mention that staff received about I counted fifty-seven public comment letters for today's meeting on this item, and they were all in support of the food truck. So um I don't want to go over all the comments, but I did was able to see that they were all in support. Um so staff doesn't have a recommendation to this, but we have some alternatives for the uh council to consider. So the first one would be to uphold the design uh permit denial and the planning commission decision. And the second one would be to overturn the design permit denial. Or a third one, which is to overturn the design permit now with some modifications to the project. So with that being said, I think the applicant is here and and sure she has some some words to say to the council, but I'm also here if you have questions for me.
Vanessa, you're on mute if you're if you're adjusting the council.
Hi, um my name is Shakira Sabahi and I'm speaking on behalf of Vanessa Lara. Um she reached out to me when the planning commission denied her request um for the food truck placement, and I was just personally surprised after reviewing the prior meetings and looking over the Broadway District specific plan as to why it was um denied. Um it was a split decision and we're asking for a reconsideration due to the fact that the planning commission originally planned to approve this food truck. And it seems pretty clear that decision was made final based on the comments of Mister Hess in the Chamber of Commerce. And um we just feel that this decision is unjust as food trucks from other cities are being considered a good addition to the commission. Whereas this specific truck is being singled out as not specifically following the Broadway District specific plan design, but there have been like temporary food trucks that have been approved. Didn't see why this specific food truck was denied in the first place.
Is that the extent of your comment?
Yes, as of now, unless.
Okay, I think this is a public comment. Um I'm gonna go ahead and put you back in the attendees. Thank you for your comments.
This is actually Vanessa. We just have a different name on the on the zoom, but because of this is like her daughter's computer, but this is actually when I was speaking.
Okay, is Vanessa there and does she want to um adjust the council?
Yes.
Okay.
This is her opportunity to dress council.
Yeah, this is her, this is her opportunity.
Yes, good evening. And yes, and what I'm asking is, you know, I I reach out to, you know, quite a few people if from the board, you know, asking for, you know, for somebody to look at my case and, you know, try to, you know, get some kind of support and be able to get, you know, equal opportunity like they're giving other people. I'm trying to get permit legally. Uh as I mentioned before, there's people selling fruit on the Broadway Dris- district and they don't have permit and, you know, they're letting them, you know, sell and trying to go the legal way to to apply. You know, I got the truck inspected by Napa Health Department and and it's, you know, I got all the stickers and it's all approved. And when I am reach out, when I saw that the food truck from Chamber, and that's when I am, I had, you know, the thought, you know, my business is always out of the city. And I'm me being a resident of American Canyon, I wanted to do business here in American Canyon. And when I saw the truck from Chamber supporting the food truck, that's when I reached out to city and I asked him, you know, how how what can I do, you know, to get my food truck in business? They told me, you know, that I needed to find a place. I gave them the address. They give me in okay that the address was good, but at the end, you know, they told me that, you know, after waiting a few months, it was back and forth, back and forth, and they told me that is not as on a Broadway district plans. So, you know, I'm all confused and, you know, asking for your support since, you know, the food truck from Chamber is in the district, you know, Broadway district district plan as well. So I don't know. I don't understand why, you know, mine doesn't get approved. And I think would be good for, you know, American Canyon residents, you know, to have food truck here in the city, you know, instead of going to another cities, you know, there's a bunch in Napa County, a lot in in Vallejo, but there's nothing here in in American Canyon. So I think it would be a good asset, you know, for the resident, you know, to have a food, you know, food truck. And so I'm, you know, looking for your support, you know, to get approved on the food truck. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Any other uh contributors to this conversation from the African side? Okay.
I I do not have any hands raised, so I think.
Alright, then we will uh uh return to council here and have some conversation about it. Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes, I just wanted some clarification. In the original planning commission staff report, staff did recommend approval of the permit or did I misread it?
Um Vice Mayor Joseph's um staff did recommend approval of the uh design permit, but um the reason we brought it forward to the planning commission is there are a lot of issues on both sides and we really felt this was a an issue that would be, one, the planning commission as residents or representatives could could best judge is um what the, you know, appropriate decision would be. The ultimate resolution approved by the planning commission describes the reasons for uh denying the application.
Okay, and then um, well, I I suppose I should make a disclosure. I did have a conversation with well, Larry Cudernow, who would be kind of the property manager of the site, uh who spoke in favor of this project. So I wanted to make that ex parte communicate or disclosure. Thank you.
How's the comment from council? Please some clarification. Uh let's go back to the uh Broadway District specific plan. Uh I remember recalling correctly the discussion. Uh it was thought of interest in uh a food truck roundup type of thing, like you've seen in many areas, larger metropolitan areas, something that was approved. But if my understanding is correct, that uh single operator was not uh approved? Because in the presentation we just got, this sounds like a single truck. By itself, it's something that uh is allowed.
Uh Mayor Garcia, the um uh at the time, the Broadway District plan was was being proposed and it was also discussed during the mobile service vending ordinance. And there was, there's a lot of popularity in in food truck roundups, uh where you have a a cluster of food trucks, each of them offering different types of food. It's it's kind of fun. You get to try different things and and they have amenities, typically they'll have music and parking and seating and restrooms and lights and host of things. Um and so it seems like everyone was in favor of um something interesting like that. Uh I don't recall a single food truck by itself being discussed at all, so we never really got feedback one way or another, whether an individual truck just for takeout was um consistent with the Broadway plan. And that's really why why staff didn't want to make, take on that decision itself. We felt that more of a community value. And that's one of the reasons we took it to the planning commission for their opinion and and viewpoint on the issue.
So there was an understanding that that's how we arrived at uh because the presentation that we just saw said they were uh was allowed.
Um it's allowed. Uh we have a variety of uses in the zoning that's permitted, but the application has to meet the findings. So uh listing something in the zoning isn't a guarantee that it could meet the findings and and that's um, this is one of those unusual cases where it's the first of its kind application in kind of an unusual um uh kind of way in which it's presented. And so that's ultimately the planning commission uh voted for one. There was a was one um commissioner in opposition. Um but the the view and the findings reflect um planning commission uh uh a policy uh respect to interpreting the Broadway plan as well as the general plan um policies.
Hey, you know, uh, council member, whose hand was up first?
Councilman David.
Councilman Washington.
Councilman, he was first.
Okay, Councilman Laurel.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Um, you know, I've been hearing for years about why food trucks aren't in American Canyon, and I don't know why um we're letting. we're letting perfection get in the way of progress, right? So the perfect idea would be what would be in the Broadway District specific plan, a court of food trucks that were there semi permanently or not. Now we're getting an applicant for one food truck. It's in the in a place where we wanted food trucks. And we're denying that application. Just seems odd to me that, well, we couldn't do it. Maybe this food truck will attract more food trucks and then we can actually build a court that's envisioned in the Broadway District specific plan. We have a member of the community who is investing in the community, who wants to go at it with with you know, their food and their and their product. Let's give them a chance. I don't know why we're standing in that way.
Thank you. Councilmember Washington.
Yeah, I like to echo what Councilman Oral was just saying. And Mike, I have a question. Is Vanessa from American Canyon?
As she stated earlier, she said that on her comments.
I didn't catch that. Thank you. Thank you. Um, so I mean, I guess I would I would start off by saying, you know, we're talking about supporting small businesses. We're talking about supporting minorities and their and their businesses as well. And women own businesses. So I'm like, you know, Councilmember Oral, you know, where do you start? You start by the first one, you know, to see how they, you know, the the person managing the property that we want to put it on is supportive of it, you know. So I can't really see how, you know, we're denying this opportunity for someone. Especially when we're preaching that we want to support small business. We want to support women owned businesses. We want to support these things. You know, it doesn't sound like we're supporting it.
Councilmember Alvedamos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say I have my own personal bias in that I love food trucks, especially taco trucks. So if I have to accuse myself for that reason, I totally get it. But second, I want to echo what Councilmember Washington and Councilmember Aura were saying. I think the concern, if I understand it correctly, is that this is a permit for a permanent food truck location. And we are keep on talking about beautifying the Broadway District specific plan and adding more greenery and slowing down speed limits and making it child friendly, et cetera, et cetera. But I think it's important to note that this property is going to be leased. So just if just because we approve it now as a permanent location doesn't mean that our applicant will be unwilling to relocate in the future. For instance, when we complete the Watson Ranch project, I think we talked about doing some kind of food truck thing like Brent Brent described earlier in Watson Ranch as well. Or maybe like Councilmember Oros suggested, one food truck will bring other food trucks and we can have this lot of just like they do in San Francisco and other cities. They actually did it in Napa for a while. It was Food Truck Fridays. And a bunch of food trucks would come out and there was a little seating area and music and it's a lot of fun. It's, you know, something to do for for everybody, families, kids, the teenagers. We're always talking about how there's nothing to do for, you know, people in their late teens, early twenties. Well, this would be, this would be super fun in the future. And I think it's important to envision that future of potentially expanding. It's also kind of reminding me of when we had that conversation about Clark Ranch and allowing the the people who are already there to continue operating there. Instead of like Councilmember Oros said, focusing on perfection, I think this would be a great start and I don't understand why we're just so focused on, you know, the permanency of it or the fact that it's one food truck rather than seven or, you know. And so those are my comments for now. I also agree with Councilmember Washington. I just have to reiterate this. We should definitely be supporting diversity in our businesses such as women owned businesses in American Canyon. I really appreciated that comment.
I totally agree. And I'm gonna appreciate Councilmember Abadamos's support for the love of tacos. So hey, you know what? They come in all flavors. Certainly I've had my share of sampling all of them, even have my own favorites. Now, as I remarked earlier, whether you call it food truck court or food truck roundup, I think there's an help. I don't know how many of my colleagues here have seen programs on that. I used to, I think it was Anthony Bourdain once had a show on that that was in the Los Angeles area. Kind of area that was developing much like American Canyon. But it was incredible. As Councilmember Alvedamos pointed out, they kind of made a little area there for the community and it was a very much a community based type of event. And very social and a lot of food experience. Certainly, I would take it American Canyon, given the diversity of our community, there's going to be some other food truck than a taco truck. It's going to be probably some South Asian cuisine, some Middle Eastern cuisine, some Filipino cuisine. I mean, that's going to be a dog. So I'm thinking that was kind of a working through this whole agenda item. I thought, you know, a food truck roundup, or if you call it food truck court, I mean, how's that something like that get started? Maybe it starts with one person having a food truck. And and maybe that draws another, this council member, was previously discussed here. It's a draw. I think it's a way we can bring attention to to American Canyon on the highway. It's highly visible. And I think it behooves us to have a further discussion on how we might attract something on the highway. That brings a moment to remember for people coming to American Canyon. I know the property at some point will probably be the owner will may decide to sell it and develop something else. But in the interim, we have some use of it that is beneficial to local business owner. Benefits the community for a product that it sells. And I think it behooves us to have a further conversation some other time perhaps on how we might develop this concept of a food truck court or roundup, however you prefer to call it. With that being said, Vice Mayor Joseph.
Well, a couple of things. First, I would echo the mayor's comments about trying to develop a food truck court. And I think that ought to be our ultimate objective. And then a a couple of other comments. I'm hoping none of this is going to impact Councilmember Oro's Taco de Oro program. Because we don't want to keep that going away. So as long as Councilmember Oro is still willing to pony up with the Taco de Oro's, we're good. The last one is a technical question. I, this is a public hearing and I know we've heard from the applicant. And there weren't any comments, but now I'm noticing there's one person in the in the Zoom atmosphere that has her hand raised. So is there going to be a public hearing or did it?
Yes.
We haven't. I was just gonna say, I don't think that we've called for comments yet.
No, we have not. No, I was waiting for a discussion from council.
Thank you.
All right. Well, then I'll I'll keep quiet.
Okay. So council, are you ready for public hearing now?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question before we open public hearing. Um, I I read in the staff report that it's and also I think William presented that it's going to be takeout only and there's no seating. May I ask why that is? If our ultimate goal is like a top food truck court, then why wouldn't we encourage outdoor seating? Is was that just a decision by the applicant or is that something that we're requiring?
I think this is William. I think at the time, this is, that was a decision by the applicant, but there's also I think there were some COVID prevention measures that.
Yeah, yes, that's correct, William. And when I put the application back in March, it was COVID. And we decided not to have seating, but I'm open to anything that I get approved, you know, that would be nice, you know, I haven't, and you know, like a vision, you know, to put in a really nice tables with, you know, umbrellas, you know, to make it, you know, make the area look really nice. And put, you know, cover up, you know.
Well, yeah, it's a good public health approach. Thank you for that consideration. Okay, council ready for public comment? Public hearing is open. We'll take public comment.
Okay. Mayor Garcia, I have written comments received. I have 58 comments and I will read the names very quickly. And I apologize to anyone who I butcher your name.
Give us an idea of support or.
Yeah. So Abigail Venus, Amos Magzano, Aiden Sinclair, Alana Casta Castagador, Alana Tuck Longharry, Alex Tron, Alex Tapong, Alex Terran Nishi, Anna Anthony Torres, Andrew Peterson, Angie Song, Bella Maldonado, Brian Peña, Carla, Carlos Garcia, Celine Zindejas, Devin Walken, Elijah Taylor Cooney, Emilio Lara, Eric Tat, Flip Martyr, Jazareen Norona, Jennifer Tran, Jimena, Jacob Capricui, Jerome Hernandez, Jorge Aguilar Harro, Jordan Hamilton, Kaylee Cameron, Kevin, Lelana Tatian Gahari, Long Lau, Marcus Chan, Mariela Perez, Mason Broditt, Matthew Ruiz, Melanie Daniels, Michael Peru, Matthew Santiago, Oscar Hong, Nancy Doan, Nate, Norman Lonnie, Pete, Peter Tron, Phil Sakaro, Riley Robert Wu, Romeo Dekeyanen, Rosa Moore, Seth Shakira Sebaha Sabahy, Stephen Sully Buntavahivi, Vanessa Zuniga, Vincent Espejo and Yan Vu.
How many were? What was their position?
They, I believe all of them were in favor of.
And for supporting, okay.
I have one hand up for oral comments.
Okay.
Is Melissa Lamatina. And go ahead, Melissa.
Good evening, council. Happy Taco Tuesday. I just want to say we need the taco trucks. We can't wait for the 29 corridor to be finished. When's that going to happen? We need our taco trucks. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other speakers?
I do. I have no other attendee of just Councilmember Washington has his hand up again. Oh, wait, one more attendee last minute. Sorry. I have Michael and bring him over. Go ahead, Michael.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Michael. I'm a resident of American Canyon, Napa County, and I work in Vallejo. And in my area, there's actually a food truck and multiple Mexican restaurants there and everything seems to work really great. I know when people are on the go, people go to the Mexican food truck. When people want to eat in, they go to the restaurants. It's brings in a lot of traffic for the area and it's good traffic and it's been great business for the area from what I can see. It gives me a lot of options depending on what I want to do for the day. And I would really love to see taco trucks here in American Canyon. So that way I don't go to Napa or Vallejo or different cities. Yeah, that's basically it.
Michael, could I please get your last name for the record?
Yeah, it's Laura.
Laura?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
I do have, I have an, oh, you know what? No, I'm still seeing Michael's hand. I'm just gonna lower his hand and I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, very good. And we will close public comment on this matter to council for for the discussion. Councilmember Washington, you have your hand up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yes, a quick question for Mr. Cooper. Prior to the planning commission making that that vote, were they privy to some of the community comments and and the ones for or against? Did that help persuade them one way or the other when when they came to their vote?
Um, well, a council member, I can't tell you what swayed them per se. But I believe the staff report had two. Let's see, we did receive written comments. They were split 50 50 in favor and opposed. And then there was, I think some of the commenters also attended the commission meeting. I'm not sure if William can recall as well. But there were, there were arguments on both sides of the issue from the public.
Were they primarily arguments pertaining to the specific plan, the Broadway specific plan was is what they basically used as the guideline?
I recall there were some comments about the Broadway plan, but also there were comments about competitive competition with with brick and mortar stores and retail restaurants and the like. Where food trucks can sort of roll in place and and our, you know, restaurants and our retail centers have other expenses that food trucks don't. So there was an opinion expressed about an unfair competition in that regard.
That the food truck would be a unfair competition.
Correct.
Interesting.
And for Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes, well, I'm, you know, let's face it, when you get almost 60 people all saying yes and no one's saying no, that's a pretty persuasive argument in and of itself. About the only thing that I would like to suggest, well, two things. One, probably I wouldn't add it as a condition other than I do think we ought to consider trying to create a food truck court. Yeah, there may be some spots. I mean, this may not be an appropriate time, but just as a throw it out there. Even the city's property there on the corner of Napa Junction and 29 might be big enough to to do something that that would be a relatively low cost investment. So that's just my personal opinion about where we ought to be headed specifically to this proposal. I wouldn't mind adding something that talks about a seating arrangement. But frankly, leave it up to staff to be the the regulator, recognizing there could be some COVID issues or some general public health and so forth. But as far as I'm concerned, I would want to go ahead and give the applicant some discretion to provide some kind of a seating area if there's space and if it works. And that's why I'm kind of leaving it up to staff. If if they can convince staff that it's safe and functional, I I would be willing to add a condition that would allow that as a as an option.
I think it's, you know, to your comment, Vice Mayor Joseph, I think anything that's directed by CDC, public health, you know, we got informed of that. So given COVID, I think it was a wise move by the applicant. Yeah. You know, not have a public seating at this time.
Yeah.
I think, yeah.
For me, I would even, well, if there's more discussion, there's more discussion. Otherwise, I'd be willing to support. I guess option three, if you want to get technical, that supporting the the project, but adding that additional condition. And even if, you know, even that is optional, but I certainly think we ought to have the business.
I think it's just overturn the design permit denial, Mr. Vice Mayor Joseph.
I think the permit application says that it's takeout only and there's no seating. So I would just remove that from the application.
Oh, yeah. And I thought.
Not adding a condition, it's removing something from there.
And I thought I thought it was just for a COVID reason, which could seems like staff would have the rights to take care of that. I don't.
Yeah, that's a good point. Given the current, this would be my new question to staff. Given the application as is, if something changed and, you know, life got to be better, could they ask to put in seating? Is that something staff could consider, you know, at the ministerial level?
Or would it be just like restaurants where you take out that condition and when it's safe to put chairs out, they can just put chairs out?
Okay, well, I guess Vice Mayor Joseph, a couple of couple of options. The council could could direct staff to or rather approve the project with a modification to delete mention of takeout only. Absent that, another option would be if the applicant decided at some time to modify the application where it's not just daylight only or they add seating or, you know, any any number of of modifications to it. We do have a administrative process to allow for minor changes and it's more of a documentation of the change. Is kind of the nature of that process when it's, you know, a small change and it's all in line with what is intended.
Okay, so going to Councilmember Abadamos's point, if the current arrangement is there is no takeout, does that become a constraint that you can't ministerially overcome?
I know it's not a constraint. We can, we can overcome that.
Oh, okay. Then then I'm partial to just saying, let's overturn the the planning commission. let's overturn the, the planning commission's denial and leave it at that.
I, I can. Fine, I point of discussion though. It could be a draw to other vendors as well, hopefully food trucks. But then there's the mango nut stand. You make a fresh juice drink. It's a little push cart. The pilot, that's the Mexican popsicles, you know, with the bills on it. Actually, the roadside fruit vendor must do set up there as well. I think we need to have clarity. This is for food trucks. Yeah, that, that's not approved. Or if we do approve it, then we need to have a conversation about that.
Actually, that is a good point because not only did the applicant bring it up, but I think we've all seen there's a fruit stand near my neighborhood. There's flowers being sold by the Safeway gas station. You know, I guess the question is, I'm assuming those, are they permitted or are they just kind of rogue events?
Well, I guess the mayor mentioned it first. I'll say, Mayor Garcia, there's a specific state law that allows push cart vending from a street. It originated in Los Angeles where there is, there are a lot of push carts. And, and the reason for the state laws is as much of the same arguments as Councilmember Washington mentioned. You know, there are communities that have a hard time making their way into the economy and this is a way in which they can have a living. And, and so there is a specific state law that allows for push carts on street corners.
But the fruit stand and the flowers are, those aren't push carts. Those are flowers in a bucket and
Yeah.
A fruit stand, which is a little bit more permanent or more stable than a.
The stand, no, there's a pop up. There's one there on, on, actually, you can let this in, Teresa.
Yeah.
It used to be by Safeway. And I guess somebody complained and it moved or something.
Well, the point I'm trying to raise is we need to be specific about how we, we manage these types of things.
Yeah.
What are we, what do we want? What type of business do we want in this area? I think we all agree, I think that's the sentiment I hear about food trucks, but not, push carts don't sound like they would fit that model anyway. It's not.
The state does allow within certain confines for a state to create its own ordinance. So that is always an option. But it may not eliminate practice altogether.
Well, it's a matter to be taken up at another time though. So the council's ready. I think I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Joseph and a second from Councilman Coro.
Does that figure what option three or option two?
Actually, we option two, I think it's the overturn the denial.
Yeah.
I would, I would, I would think that the option three would give the benefit to Vanessa to, to make changes later on that could be positive for her. So I think it gives her a little bit more leverage of what she wants to do because she's been, you know, trying to do this the right way. I think we should give her that opportunity.
I also think that it's better not to give her more work when she's trying to follow COVID policy. So I think if we just remove the takeout only clause from the permit, I mean, she, she's obviously trying to comply. So I don't think she's going to put out tables if they're not allowed.
Right.
Well, but I think, I think what was Mark, Vice Mayor Joseph's question to Brent was, it was, it was something that staff could easily modify.
The staff can modify.
But the applicant would have to submit an amended application or something. So it's making her take another step just to put out tables and chairs.
And option three, option three allows us to give her the opportunity, we can make some changes.
Say what?
And I appreciate that. I guess my concern is I would still want staff to be the regulator if we take, take out.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I guess for me, that's why I asked the question because I was leaning towards three. But if staff has the ministerial authority to work with the applicant when the time comes to say, yeah, you can now set up a seating area.
Let's work in the framework of what we have.
Yeah, the authority's there. Even if we overturn the takeout, she would still have to come forward and say, here's how I'm going to do it. Staff is still going to oversee it and say you can put so many or not, whatever. So I'm inclined to think that staff has the discretion. And I think based on this hearing, would obviously want to work with the applicant. You know, so that, that's why I ended up with saying, let's just overturn the denial and, and let everything out. So.
My, my, all the other concern would be that by just overturning it, would that protect her from any additional fees that may be put her way to make any adjustments? No, okay. That was my biggest concern. She shouldn't have to absorb any more fees.
Because also, Mark, like we, we don't tell other restaurants who have outdoor dining or indoor dining that it's takeout only because of COVID. That's not in their permit application. That's just something that the governor issued. And so I, I, I don't understand why this applicant is being treated differently and being told, hey, you can't put tables out there and that's in your permit application. The pandemic isn't.
Abadamas, if I could clarify, staff didn't tell the applicant that seating was not allowed. This was from the applicant.
Right.
Based on the understanding that she can't have seating, that she's, the applicant said that that's what she was advised because of COVID.
And she may have did that only with, with the thought that the only way to get it approved is to make sure she stated that.
Let me ask a clarifying question then. Does the permit that we're considering have any provision regarding takeout?
Willan, could you clarify? I believe the project description that went to the planning commission defined the project as takeout only.
Yeah, I'm, I'm taking a look at the resolution previously.
And again, I, I think we're all agreed that we don't want to restrict her to takeout only. So whichever approach facilitates that is, is the one I would make a motion to, to approve.
Option three is most appropriate for that.
I think the applicant wanted to say something.
Yeah, if it's possible, thank you. If it's possible to approve with seating tables would be nice so I don't have to pre, you know, apply again and then get whatever it's available or approved by you guys. But seating, area seating tables would be, you know, great for me.
I think we, we stay within the framework of what the city regulations require right now. Which is, you know, if you're, I would remove all the number three and just go with number two. And anytime the applicant can always check it with the city, see what's allowed.
I, I think council direction is clear. So I think we, we move forward with, with overturning the design permit denial and go from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor Council, we don't need to overcomplicate it. The, the council can do number two. And when the applicant wants to put tables out as we finalize everything, she'll have a little picture. She'll say, I want to put the tables here. And staff was like, okay, that's, we're able to do that. It's an administrative thing. It's not additional fee. It's not additional application. It will be a piece of paper that says, I'm going to put my truck here. I'm going to put some tables here. And, and it's, we don't need, you know, photo imagery or any of that sort of thing. So there is a future conversation we need to have with Ms. Lara because we want to see where the tables are going to go.
That's right.
But it's, it's not a future application. It's not a future fee. We can, staff can accomplish this very quickly in probably half an hour.
Right.
Less maybe.
A lot quicker than we spent time discussing. Okay, so we have a motion to re.
In a second, yeah.
Would you restate your motion, Council, Vice Mayor Joseph?
In light of the comments from staff and in our comments, I'm moving that we just overturn the design permit denial, option two.
Oh, second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Okay. I have a Councilmember Abadamas.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, Council. Move on to the public hearing item. It's number 11, item number 11. SDG Commerce 217 Warehouse Distribution Center Conditional Use Permit, Appeal of the Planning Commission Approval. Recommendation, direct staff to report on the analysis and the Laborers International Union of North America Local 324. That's LIUNA. Appeal of the Planning Commission Approval of the SDG Commerce 20217 Warehouse Distribution Center Conditional Use Permit, no later than December 7, 2021.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The applicants requested to time to consider different environmental options and the way it's reviewed for the project. Environmental review is a city document, so it does require the city to concur with the, with the approach. And so there's some need for time for us to work with the applicant on perhaps the same or modified approach. And our suggestion is to come back to the council with a not to, not later than date with an approach for your consideration and update. I worked with the city attorney on, on this report. I don't know if he has any clarifying comments to make on, on the idea.
I think Brent raised the reason for it. The applicant's a separate entity. We're the lead agency under SEQA. They want time to analyze the environmental analysis to see if they want to go a different way. So we have to, as lead agency, honor that, but still keep the application alive. So a report back as suggested would do that.
Very good. I have any questions on this matter before I open public home, the public hearing? Now, the public hearing is open. Do we have any comment from public hearing?
I have one. I have Mr. Darian Key.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. My name is Darian Key speaking on behalf of American Canyon Residents for Responsible Development. Residence is an unincorporated association of individuals and labor organizations whose members live, work, and raise their families in American Canyon. We previously submitted written comments identifying the significant environmental impacts from the project that they'll have on air quality, greenhouse gases, land use, noise, and transportation that they indeed failed to analyze or address properly. We've also filed written comments this evening explaining that the council was considering two related components of the SDG's warehouse district development under separate agenda items, SDG 330 project, which we note was continued, and this matter, SDG 217 project. The two projects, though, were proposed by a single applicant to develop wine warehouses on adjacent parcels. Both projects will be located on land being subdivided by the SDG 330 project's parcel map. Those projects must be analyzed together as a single project pursuant to SEQA. The applicant has asked for more time to review these issues previously identified because of some of the issues we raised along with the city's analysis. We support this continuance until December. However, that continuance should be used to prepare an EIR to analyze the SDG 217 project and the SDG 330 project in a single EIR. Additionally, this project may not have either a tentative parcel map nor final map due to the expiration of the tentative parcel map on February 28, 2021. None of the agenda items nor the resolution today discussed whether the tentative parcel map had been extended. Thus, if it wasn't, approval of the project would have violated the subdivision map act. Thus, given these issues, we are just to be counsel to continue this hearing and request that an EIR be developed for both these projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
You?
Any other speakers?
I have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, any written public comment?
Uh, let's see. This is. We're at that's. We received public comment. I'm sorry, it's not on my list because it was like after six o'clock that we received this, but it was from the same gentleman who made the oral comment a moment ago. We did receive one written comment.
Very good, thank you. If there's no other public comment on this matter without closed public hearing, we'll return to council for discussion.
Hopefully, things can get worked out. I'll make a motion. We essentially continue this to no later than December 7, 2021.
Oh, second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Councilmember Abadamas.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, Council. Move on now to our business items. Item number 12, water supply and demand drought emergency stage two.
Coming over, we have. Okay, we have Maintenance Utility Director Felix Hernandez. Felix, I do not see Girard on this list.
Excuse me?
I do not see Girard. You asked me to add him, but I don't see.
Oh, Uri, yeah, Uri is unable to, to attend tonight.
Okay, thank you.
We do have Pam Phillips will be joining us as well as.
They're all on, everyone's on.
Okay, please. We're ready to take it away, I suppose. I was thinking, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff and members of the community. So as has been well publicized, the drought is ongoing. Persistent drought and over the last several months, council received an update on historical water demand as well as available water sources. Teresa, do you, could you enable my camera, please? I don't have video.
I, I don't do that. You, you do that on yours?
I don't have the ability like I normally do. I don't have that, that option.
I don't, I, I don't have the control of that. If you did, try, I'm sorry, I don't know what's.
I think it's okay to proceed. We'll, we'll look.
Okay. Oh, okay, wait, it might, hold on a second. I think I figured it out here. Try now. Thank you, sorry about that.
That's okay. I mean, I know I have obviously some lighting issues here, but my, just kind of roll a bit. Okay. So with that, that's what I was saying. Over the last several months, Over the last several months, council did receive update on historical demand as well as available water sources. And based on that information that was presented, council did take action on June 1, where a resolution was adopted declaring a stage one drought emergency. And that called for a 10% reduction in water use by all customers. Unfortunately, as we, as we continue to gather data through through May, June, and part of July, we saw that that trend was not decreasing enough, and determined that further action was needed. That action that was being requested was a 20% reduction in demand through the remainder of 2021. And on July 20, council did adopt a resolution declaring a stage two drought emergency, which called for a 20% reduction in water use for all customers. And tonight, we will present, have a presentation where we can provide updated information and data to council. So with that, let me get to this presentation. I'm going to share my screen here. And this. Okay. So the, hopefully everyone can see this drought strike team report.
It's very usable.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's usable.
So I need to do this. Before I go any further, I want to, I want to take this opportunity to thank the Mizetta Family Company as well as Recology for partnering with us with our recycle water delivery. They did donate barrels, and we also received some donations from it's, I've been identified as an olive oil company. I don't know which one it was, but they donated some 250 gallon totes, which are really nice. So with that, our strike team consists of utility billing, parks, maintenance, water reclamation, water treatment and distribution, recycle water, homes and outreach, development and engineering. The City of American Canyon.org forward slash water is where folks can go to receive information about the drought, the My Water Portal, as well as Save Our Water. We do also have it in Spanish. And from this point, I'm going to turn over the next few slides to our assistant manager, Dominic Patrick, and he will cover some of the data that we're going to present.
Good evening. So, so far, we have 315 customers signed up on My Water Portal. Next slide, please. Year-to-date, this actually is all the way through August 16. We are trending on a 5.4 reduction in total water, potable water consumption.
Yes, Mr. Patrick, is this, this does say through July 31st. Is that, are we, is this, this is indeed through July 31st and not through mid-August? Is that correct?
The dates on the bottom are incorrect. This is year-to-date. This is actually through August 16th comparing 2020 to 2021. I apologize.
Thank you.
Again, dates are incorrect here on the right, as you see. This is actually year-to-date of August 16, 2021 compared to August 2020. And all four categories, you can see that we have a reduction. I think the biggest takeaway is since June to July, residents have actually reduced a 50%, 15% overall, which brings us to our next slide. Comparing July to July of '21 to 2020, we actually have an 18% decrease just in residents. So congratulations. We did not meet our goal. However, that is a huge decrease. And typically, you do not see a decrease from June to July. Typically, you'd see an increase. So tip to the hat to all of you guys that helped. Next slide, please. Commercial customers, a 13% decrease. Next slide. July to July, 54% decrease in city. This also might have been helped to transferring Kimberly Park over from potable water to reclaim water. And Public's Work and Maintenance Utilities are looking into more recycled water projects. And for internal operational changes, communications and outreach, as we touched light on that stage two of June 20th, we've had residents reducing their water significantly. And that has a lot to do with the communications and outreach. It helps to repair the 40 leaks that we did this year and the public outreach for Coffee in the Wetlands, National Night Out. I believe we've had to meet me in the streets now. Our stage two with our billing cards. And we continue the message on social media, Facebook, et cetera, newsletters, and utility bills. And next slide. More on...
So the recycle water program, we'll turn this over to Ms. Phillips, and she will cover the recycle water program. She's been the lead with, with this program for us. So take it away, Pam.
Good morning. I'm sorry. Good evening, everybody. So as the slide presents, we've had 306 residential users. They've taken the training for recycled water. Just to give a comparison, in June, that number was 92. So in the past month and a half, we've gotten, you know, almost 200 people signing up for this program. So as Dominic states, I think the outreach that we've been doing has definitely helped the residents use this program more. We do have two stations open still here at the water reclamation facility and at the courtyard. The courtyard's also open the first and third Saturday of the month. We still do see people coming on the weekends and getting water. In July, there was 233,000 gallons of water picked up by residents at the courtyard. The delivery system, their delivery program, we have 125 residents signed up. There's always anywhere between 10 and 20 new users every week. We've had to add an extra day, so we're now delivering three days a week. We deliver Monday, Tuesday, and Fridays. And as Mr. Hernandez said, Recology Mizetta, and it's, it's called the Olive Oil Factory, and they're in Fairfield, has donated some of the 250 gallon totes to us. Next slide, please. So I've asked residents to send me pictures of what they've been doing with their water, how they've been using it. As you can see, the barrels that we have provided along with the pump is being used. It's, people have been able to use this system pretty well. You see people's grasses are green, their flowers are green. Next slide, please. And these are just more pictures of, again, what residents are doing with their water. I had one gentleman ask me, didn't have a sign in his yard, but he wanted a sign because he's using the water and he's getting dirty looks from everybody. So he wanted a yard sign. But I just, again, it just shows that how we're using the water is, is, is good. We also have our rebate programs. We are doing cash for grass and the toilet rebate. There's 8,149 square feet of turf that have been replaced this year and 42 toilets replaced. There's about one, maybe one a week of each of these that come in per week that we actually process.
All right. Thank you, Pam. Appreciate that information. So moving along, again, best practice is to save water. We keep reiterating this on our website and every time we do a strike team update. Customers can reduce the number of days per week where you're getting landscape, especially turf lawns, inspect irrigation systems, reduce minutes of runtime on irrigation cycles, limit the duration of showers to five minutes or less. And not on here, but contact Maintenance Utilities if you have any questions regarding your irrigation or anything like that. We're happy to help. And customers sign up for the water portal is also a huge tool. The stage two mandatory compliance water alert outlines everything here. I'm not going to go through every bullet item, but it is just like before, stage two mandatory water alert. This is a call to action. We're making great progress. Our customers, both commercial and residential, making, making great progress. But we still have a call to action for both. Again, residential customers, sign up for the water portal. Be mindful of your use. Commercial customers, the water portal, we keep hammering that point. Sign up for the water portal. And ornamental water use, take advantage of cash for grass rebate program. And with that, I'll take questions, feedback, or suggestions. And I want to thank Mr. Leary for the feedback regarding the email. Thank you. I just had some questions from some people talk about recycle water. Is there an issue with salt content, saline content of the recycle water? Potable water. Pam, Pam, would you like to touch on that?
Sure. So the, the salinity of the recycled water is a bit higher than our potable water. However, I guess that's why I asked for the pictures, because people are using this on their grass and their flowers, and it's thriving. It doesn't seem to be hurting anything, but yes, the salinity is a bit higher. We check it every day.
Thank you. With that, Councilmember Joseph.
Yes. Well, first of all, you know, I haven't gotten to the recycled water yet. I need to. And I did get a chance to talk to a local neighbor who pointed out how he's got like a half, half horsepower pump that allows you to literally use your hose like a regular hose. It's, and you don't have to manually pump and fill up containers. So that really is an exciting thing. I'll probably get in trouble, but at some point, we probably should consider a nominal delivery fee just so that we offset some of the staff time. Put it on your water bill. Like I said, I'll probably get beat up for that, but I think that might be something to consider down the road. The other, other than all of this is good information, a couple of things. As I mentioned to the city manager, what I'd like to see is a monthly report that could be on consent that breaks out the usage, similar to what you've got, but breaks it out by those customer categories. And what was the water use, you know, the last month, the prior month, and the year ago? That, the same kind of format that the water portal gives us. So then you can quickly see if we're doing great or not doing great, or who's, who's doing well and so forth. So for me, as a data-oriented kind of guy, it would be handy and would tell the story much faster than, than going back over, over the details that we've gone over a couple of times. The only other question is, we received a comment, an email, I think, from the swimming pool people and the spa people making the case that they ought to be allowed to fill their pools and their spas. And, you know, they make their case. Could staff provide an argument for or against, or at least give us the background for why that's a prohibition during stage two?
With respect to filling spas and pools?
Yes.
It's, it's, the, the stage two restrictions are spelled out. And I do believe that it specifically says no filling of pools or spas.
Is that our prohibition, or is that a mandate from the state?
That is something that was, was adopted by council, and I have to go back to see the exact date of when the, when the different drought stages were adopted. And I believe it's, it's also identified in the code.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out the authority there. If it's, if it's our discretion, then it may be worth at least exploring. If it's a state condition, then that's that. We call it a day. So maybe a little bit of background information on that might be handy. Like I said, for me, I'd like to see a monthly production report so that we can see the progress month by month.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. No. Yeah, Councilmember Vice Mayor Joseph, what I'd like to recommend is rather than, than production that we focus on usage, what we see is that production is not, is not always reflective of usage.
Okay. Usage is probably what I'm looking for. I just threw production out there because it's whatever. But yeah, the, the usage by customer category and over, over some timeframes, that's the real issue.
Councilmember Oro?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I wanted to comment on recycled water program. I did go down there and picked up my 50 gallon, I thought it was 55 gallon, 50 gallon Mizetta olive barrel. That's a lot of water, folks. And then, you know, that thing doesn't move around too well. And I used it, and I don't think you guys discussed it too much, but I am not using it actually for any plants. I'm using it to fill my decorative water fountains. So you just put that in there, and instead of using potable water, you use that. And I realized that I did not need that much water, because the fountain's only take water every couple of weeks. So I'm taking the barrel back, but I'm going to get smaller amounts of water. I don't need 50 gallons every few months, but I'm going to continue to use it. And so I, you know, when I went down there, I saw folks filling up water all day long. And if they don't know that, they can fill up water when they need it and come down and just kind of go to the corporation yard and hit a couple of buttons, and they'll let you in to use, to get recycled water directly. So I encourage that. And in fact, when I talked to Pam at the first meet in the streets, I actually was pretty skeptical about this actually happening, because at the time, there was no delivery happening. But because of delivery, I think a lot more people are taking it up. And I would encourage the continued free use of that, no matter what, because I think it's really, even if, you know, Vice Mayor Joseph, you talk about a fee, really, we're in a special, unique situation here where we're asking citizens to do a little bit more and partnering with the city to do that. I don't, just don't think it deserves any fees. I think it's a great program. And the more people that are using recycled water is going to save us more portable water. And I think they're doing that because, you know, it's nice and actually not get charged by the city for something. So those are my thoughts.
To your point, Councilmember Oro, you know, it's a cost benefit analysis. You know, I think free water, we'll get more people to use it, I would agree. I'm looking forward to getting my barrel at my house. It's just, we have the application in here just the other day. And I, so I've mentioned before, I use rainwater quite a bit. That's one incredible collection system on my house. I guess that's the end of that. I'll start using recycled water. Any other comment from staff on this? Counsel? All right. Do we get any comment on this matter?
Yes, Mayor Garcia. I have Cindy Beederman. Go ahead, Cindy.
Good evening again.
Hello.
Shout out to Pam Phillips. Like I said, she was not only responsive, but she, you know, anytime I email her, she was, she was really good about trying to educate me and stuff. I have the same neighbor that Mark does regarding that half-hour horsepower pump. And I'm telling you what, that thing shoots out faster than the regular water hose. It ran the barrels. But honestly, I think David also nailed it, too. I've always seen the potable, you know, you could go down and fill it up. I have a Ford F250. It's huge, right? But I'm not going to be able to get no 50 gallon drum of water out of that truck. And I didn't sign up until I found out when you guys were delivering it. So I, you know, it's, it's a great program and it's a great incentive. So I'm excited. You know what? I ration out my water to be able to try to bring my front yard back to life, because I did let it die because of the drought conditions. And I'm, Friday mornings, I get it filled back up. So it's a great program and just, you know, do what you got to do. But it's a wonderful program, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Did the bird go to sleep?
Yes. As soon as I could have been talking the first time, right?
At 11:11, I have a daughter who has, I think, four or five cockatiels. So every time we on the phone, you get a lot of background entertainment. All right. Any other public comment?
I see no hands raised at this time. Oh, wait. I do have one. Beth Marcos. Beth, you're muted.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry about earlier. I just want to give kudos also to Pam. I am one that got a 250 gallon tote. I have a very large lot. But I did apply for the cash for grass, and I'm also on the usage portal. But I got to tell you, if it wasn't for my neighbor Al Donaldson, he helped me with the pump. And I swear, it is fantastic. And Pam, what you said about someone giving you dirty looks, I've gotten those looks also. So I just want to say, go get your portal, but they don't hear me. But I just want to say thank you to the City of American Canyon so much for always doing everything you do. And Pam, thank you for your outreach. You were fantastic. You were on it all the time. And just thanks very much.
Thank you, Beth.
Any other speaker?
There are no speakers in the audience at this time.
Close topic comment, return to council. Vice Mayor, head up.
Yes, just to be clear, even though I think there ought to be a delivery fee, I would agree. This is not a good time to bring it up. And as I indicated, I figured I'd get beat up over it. The one thing I would throw out, based on some of the comments, we may take it seriously that we need to get the signs out that say, I'm using recycled water. Because I think, you know, I really do think there's going to be some, some public concerns where you see somebody's lawn looking green in the middle of a drought, it's going to create some reaction. So it may be in our best interest to almost insist that anybody who's getting our recycled water... it may be in our best interest to almost insist that, uh, anybody who's getting our recycled water also gets a sign and puts it up. It, it's good PR and may help a neighbor fight or, or avoid a neighborhood dispute.
Councilmember Oro.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, um, those barrels are heavy, and as Vice Beederman said, uh, you do not want to be loading those out, out of a truck, and so the delivery service, um, is important on that front.
Councilmember Washington.
Yeah, and to, um, Vice Mayor Joseph's point about the signs, I mean, that's also a way that you could probably advertise how to, to get those, those barrels brought to your home. Um, so many people in the community, I just had two yesterday ask me how to do it, that if we had those signs out, you know, they may not have the options to get on this, on these virtual calls and things of that nature. The sign would definitely promote it in a way that, hey, look, this is how you get it.
Very good, a question for staff, I have a neighbor who, uh, was, was interested in getting one. But, uh, his garden's actually in the backyard, wanted to know how could he reach, uh, as far as his backyard with the hose, the barrel? Or they all have to be in front? And I said, well, get a hose. I don't know what kind of attachment you have on your equipment, so I'm hoping it, the garden hose works on it.
Or to, for the delivery, um, that we asked, that the containers be in the front, uh, we're limited to the, the length of hose that we have, was we don't use a garden hose, we use, I believe it's a a, a one and a half inch or two, two inch, like fire hose. And so we recommend, if, if folks have a garden or something in the backyard, they can get a, a system of pump on that can pump from the front to the back, who are garden hoses, it's very easy. And if, if they can contact us, we'd be happy to, you sketch something up for them really quickly to help them out and get them started.
Very good, I'll pass it along, thank you. On the subject, uh, the flood board met today, and, uh, there was a presentation on the, uh, Napa County. Let's see, uh, water shortage, drought, what's going on in uh, some of the presentation reflects what's going on on a larger level, the state. Situation is very dire, there's not much, uh, uh, you got Russian River looking like it's dried up. If you think about that, some places. But the hills all of it. Very mindful of water, and how to pass it on to our neighbors and how to come up with programs creative like we have here in American Canyon today. So, uh, it was very good information, I compliment staff on the project they put together. And I look forward to getting my red bear, I prefer the Mazetta barrel, because see, I could, I could dip a pitcher down in there and just take it over water plants, it's easier than pumping something. But yes, it's, uh, whatever works for you folks is best. Okay, so we have action on this?
Ken Leary has raised his hand, he's, he's back.
Yeah, we, we have a, a little bit late commenter, if we wanna
I'll take that.
Take it, okay, thank you. Ken, go ahead, you're on mute.
Hello, Ken.
Yeah, I, 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 I think some people may have gotten the, this, uh, this, I, I think people misunderstood what I was saying, I think the program, I believe, the program is fantastic. I, I, I love the program, I've just been having difficulties getting information from the city. I wasn't knocking the program, it's a very good program and I'm very proud of it. And I would like to see it, it be extended. Um, I've only, I've seen like, in my neighborhood, maybe four, uh, families with the barrels, uh, one up the street, she gets her water regularly and she's doing fine with it. Uh, has a hand pump, another has electric pump. Uh, and it, it's all working really well, I just want to be able to take part in it, and somehow I don't get emails that come from the city from Public Works, uh, I get it from everyone else, so I've been looking forward to, to watering my roses and getting it back up to speed, and I just, I just, I wanna participate in the program too, and encourage everyone else to participate, uh, in the program. And, yeah. So, so thank you very much, great job, uh, appreciated, fantastic idea.
Thank you, Ken, spread the word.
Yes, uh, well, as soon as I get more water there and my neighbors see me using it, uh, they'll be jumping on board, just like Cash for Grass, all right.
All right.
Mayor, we have Ken's phone number, we'll be in touch by phone and
Okay, very good. Okay, so, uh, where are we now, here, okay?
Action, Mayor, it's just a update.
Yeah, it's an update. Uh, so receiving file? No, should do so? So moved. Second.
Sorry, so I have a, a motion from Councilmember Oro, and second?
By Mark Joseph.
By Mark, okay, thank you. And the Councilmember Abudamas?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you all. Moving on to item number thirteen on our business, uh, Enterprise Fleet Lease Program Workshop.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Lincoln Bogart, our finance director is gonna be leading, uh, this presentation tonight, I know Trusa is, uh, in the process of bringing him over. Take it away, Lincoln, when you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, community members. Uh, for my first item tonight, I'd like to discuss with you our opportunity to go with the enterprise, enterprise fleet leasing program. So on, uh, April twentieth of this year, a presentation came for PG&E um, rebate program as well as the, uh, enterprise fleet leasing option. Uh, that item was led by, uh, Director, uh, Felix Hernandez. And, uh, after that meeting, um, council asked for clarification and some analysis to be performed. Um, which is where I came in to, uh, look at the alternatives and the cost benefit analysis. So our objectives for tonight are to compare current fleet purchase plans uh, with the enterprise fleet leasing program. Consider the factors such as vehicle outfitting, maintenance costs and residual equity that all come into play, uh, as a total cost of ownership of the vehicle or of leasing vehicles. Also to illustrate estimated annual savings that may be, uh, realizable for Public Works and for the police fleets. And, um, to discuss options to pull out of the leasing program if rates rise significantly, or to extend leases, um, to combat rates of any given environment. Um, also, we want to address any questions or concerns that you might have as council. And, um, to provide a recommendation for council to approve the transition to the enterprise fleet leasing program. So, this slide, um, you have seen before. So it kind of shows, you know, the value of a car through depreciation, the cost of fuel, um, and that fuel efficiency is lost over time, and increased maintenance costs. Um, the optimal time, uh, is well before what our current replacement is, um, which, on our current fleet, we have, um, most vehicles over ten years old. Um, and this would allow us to, to bring that more current. Um, either through a, a new purchasing option for ourselves or through the leasing program. So for the public works fleet, uh, we have a total of thirty six vehicles. And, um, the plan through the fleet replacement on leasing would be twenty seven the first year, followed by three, two, and two, and two, uh, to replace the entire fleet within five years. Uh, the heavy investment in year one is to remove all of the vehicles that are ten years or older, um, from the fleet and replace them. Um, so this is, uh, enterprises breakdown, similar to what they presented, uh, in April. And it shows the, uh, in orange, uh, the cost that we have for purchases, um, the maintenance, the fuel and the fleet budget, um, or, um, their assumption was what we had budgeted for. And then there's, uh, their, uh, schedule of the lease payments are for the total number of cars leased over the period. Um, minus residual equity that we would get from selling all of the fleet over ten years old, and then each, um, year after that, under equity owned, until the final vehicle, vehicles are sold. Um, followed by lease equity showing if we were to sell off the vehicles any year during the the leasing, that the savings that could be attained. Um, the maintenance and fuel, um, the maintenance is on a contract, the fuel, they're estimating some savings by going to more high efficiency vehicles, such as hybrid alternatives. And then they have a, a total fleet budget, um, with a net cash savings on the right, they're estimating a ten year savings of about two million or close to two hundred thousand per year. Um, I had initially done my analysis using our budget for this coming year. Um, upon, um, conversations, uh, with Vice Mayor Joseph, um, I started to look closer at the assumptions that were used in the calculation of costing on the leasing side. And amended the values to be the average cost of vehicle for the lease, plus uh, the difference of going from wholesale to, um, purchase from dealers using a ten year trending analysis. And, um, so the, on the current replacement schedule, which is four vehicles per year, um, the enterprise, uh, lease cost, um, for, um, leasing, uh, outfitting, maintenance, um, is actually a little bit more expensive, but after you consider residual equity of vehicles, they do turn out to be a better deal by about a hundred and twenty six thousand. If we were to move to a five year replacement, which would be recommended if we choose not to go with the fleet option, we would need, uh, seven point two vehicles per year in the public works fleet to turn over. And at that rate, even before equity is realized, you're looking at about a hundred and forty three thousand, uh, six hundred dollars in savings by leasing versus going with the, um, the, um, the, the purchase option, and these, I, I'm sorry, I didn't clarify this earlier, these are all annual uh, savings, uh, estimated over ten years. And then, um, if after lease equity is considered, it's more like two hundred and twenty one thousand uh, per year. So the average cost of outfitting, what we used for assumptions was five thousand five hundred per vehicle, and then timing them at the replacements based on enterprise or based on purchases. Um, and then we have an equity of our own vehicles estimated right now, just under two hundred thousand or twenty one thousand five seventy one per vehicle. So as we roll out the first thirty six vehicles, I am using that equity estimate. And once those are out, then we're using the estimated residual equity, um, closer to in line with the leasing option, um, because, uh, the resale value would be higher. So for police, the fleet, um, has far fewer vehicles under ten years old. Um, still enterprise model, uh, calculates about sixteen to rotate in the first year, then three, and then zero, 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 and then repeating the cycle after that. Um, and again, they had our budgeted purchases, maintenance, fuel, fleet budget, and then they're showing a million uh, one in savings over ten years or a hundred thousand a year for the sustainable savings. Um, and there's about a hundred and seventy three in equity for police, so this is very similar to the analysis that I did, um, for Public Works, we have the nineteen vehicles, the equity owned, we have an average equity of about twenty seven thousand three hundred per vehicle. Outfitting is thirty eight thousand nine hundred. Um, currently, our budget is three vehicles per year. So at that three vehicles per year, uh, it's a better deal before equity considerations under our current replacement system to go with the leasing option by about twenty five thousand per year. And after equity is concerned, it's closer to forty four thousand. Uh, to do a fleet turnover in five years, we would have to buy three point eight cars per year or closer to four. And so that makes that savings even more for going with the leases at about a hundred and seventy two thousand a year, and after equity, a hundred and eighty three thousand per year. So another, uh, thing is that with, uh, enterprise leasing program, we'll be able to move quicker into higher efficiency, uh, hybrid and electric or, uh, you know, gas alternative vehicles, um, and moving forty three vehicles in the fleet in the first year can, can save, uh, quite a bit of emissions. So for one car going seven thousand five hundred miles, it's, uh, basically reducing, um, the metric tons by, uh, one point seven uh, metric tons per year per car. So, a final analysis, the average sustainable fleet budget savings per year of approximately two ninety eight as calculated by, uh, thousand as calculated by enterprise. As I've shown, that could be less or more, and if you consider equity and going with a five year replacement schedule in purchases, I believe that that number may be even a little on the low side. Um, but that's, uh, the two ninety eight was enterprises using our current budgeted replacement rate. Using a five year turnover rate, uh, this is based on my prior analysis, I apologize, it's not nine hundred thousand, it's actually closer to four hundred thousand. Um, I think we had a couple of more expensive vehicles in our purchases, and that the, the averages therefore were higher, using the budgeted figures. Leasing also places the entire, replaces the fleet within five years and reduces operating expenses by approximately forty percent. Um, we would have decreased greenhouse gas emissions with the, with the goal of full electrification. Also, as a part of the enterprise contract, there would be an annual analysis and consultation with the account management team and the ability to delay or discontinue replacements based on economic feasibility. Um, which would allow us to still make those management decisions as to timing of replacements and benefits of turning fleets faster or slower than originally calculated uh, to maximize return on, on investment. Or, I should say, cost of investment. Uh, and then, uh, we feel that this plan is proactive, consistent and sustainable, and provides a flexible fleet plan. Um, so our options today are to continue the current vehicle purchasing option and establish a plan to achieve a better public works fleet replacement timeline. Um, or to approve the resolution to transition to enterprise fleet leasing program for public works and police fleets. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. Well, let's not, let's not to like about that one, that's quite a bit of statements to be realized. Uh, any questions from council at this point? Vice Mayor Joseph.
Well, first of all, I appreciate the presentation and I want to emphasize, I totally support the concept. Of replacing your fleet sooner rather than later because it does increase your resale value and it does reduce your your maintenance costs. And that that's why I think I brought it up a few years ago that we should be looking at it. And in a five year cycle, if that's the optimal, that's great. My concern, as I expressed to our finance director, uh the the residual equity. I I don't understand, for example, when you look at the the column from enterprise on the public works. Equity, if you add it all up and compare it to the total lease payments. Somehow we're assuming that we're going to get eighty percent of the value of the vehicles back at resale. And maybe that is what enterprises is suggesting, but that seems a little unrealistic. Um vehicles that are five years old um usually don't have eighty percent of their value. And so that's why I think there may be some methodological problem or something. Uh I I'm not suggesting that this isn't a good idea or that we can save money. But I don't think we should count on saving two or three hundred thousand dollars a year, uh because I think that's overstating it. The second concern is. At the way I read the the agreement, there's what I'm calling a true up provision, that at the end of the lease agreement. Um they'll compare the book value to the wholesale value. And if they aren't the same, then either we pay enterprise or enterprise pays us depending. So you you know, I that that's kind of a normal thing. But it may impact our ability to try to leverage a a higher resale because it seems as if. That the terms of the lease would kind of neutralize any advantage of having a vehicle that for whatever reason. Um holds its value better than normal or something like that, so i- if we can comment on that. The last question is more of a process question. I, you know, I I'm sure enterprise approached us and I'm sure their proposal is very good. Did we reach out to other vendors? Do we know if anybody else does this and how their proposal would compare? We're talking about a two hundred thousand dollar a year investment leasing. It would be good to know that enterprise is the best option because we were able to compare to others. So those are my concerns. Again, I support the concept. I'm on board, but I do have some concerns about the provisions as well as did we shop around to get the best deal?
Thank you, uh Vice Mayor Joseph, we have uh Christie Willhite from Enterprise Fleet Management on the line. And I think she would be best to address the assumptions that enterprise made on the residual equity. As well as the true up clause in the contract agreement as to whether it's wholesale value or uh. What the method they use. And um I believe that Christie and Felix uh since they were involved earlier in the process when the first item. Came to counsel that perhaps they have uh. Director Hernandez has more information on alternatives, if any, that were approached.
Sure, thank you, Lincoln. Good to see you all again, um council. Uh I will address, so first of all, the resale question that you had regarding the um, you know, eighty percent. Of the the lease cost will come back to you in resale. Um yes, it is true that we do see some instances, especially now with the resale market, the the way that it is. Due to supply uh issues in the vehicle market where we have government agencies that are going very low mileage. And able to actually flip vehicles and even make a profit or extremely reduce their depreciation. In this analysis here, um the one that was presented, we actually have holding periods anywhere between two and five years. Based on what we anticipate for resale, so when you're calculating that eighty percent, some of those say pickup trucks. Which are going to get higher resale, they're going to hold their value um really well over the next two to three years. Those are actually being flipped maybe two times versus one time for maybe some other vehicles that we recommend holding in five years. Um as far as the terms of the lease and and resale, uh the the value of, I'm sorry, the book value versus. Um what we sell the vehicle for, we depreciate the vehicle and we have um. A very good understanding of where that vehicle market is going to be, and so we depreciate that vehicle so that you're in a positive equity position. Um essentially for an agency as yourself with vehicles somewhere between um twelve to twenty four months on average. And so therefore, once you get into that, you know, three to five year period, you're in a positive equity position. Um especially when you hit that five year period, it there's really, I don't want to say never, but there's rarely an. An issue that comes up where you would actually owe us money after selling the vehicle. Um because we can, we depreciate the vehicle correctly so that there's not an issue where you would owe more money. And then finally regarding other vendors, um it it is something that I've spoken about with um Felix and staff. Um we are actually vetted through Sourcewell, which is a large cooperative purchasing agency. Um so they sent out an RFP, they send it to six um fleet management providers in the government sector. Um the we were awarded the bid, we were ranked number one out of those six providers. Um and it wa- we were ranked on items such as um, you know, accessibility within the market, cost of course. Um services provided, et cetera, so there is that um that most cities I use to kind of satisfy that due diligence. Are RFP process.
Thank you, those are good answers that helps clarify some of the points.
Councilmember Ora.
Yeah, uh sounds like an awesome deal, quite honestly, um but it is a rental car company, so I have questions. Uh and one of the things that wasn't talked about are insurance costs, are those built into the leasing costs? Are those extra? How do we pay for that and uh what does that look like? And then I'll I'll answer that and I have a couple more questions.
So the the um, the the insurance would still run through our plan J P A. Uh as we would through purchases, however, there is an option with uh enterprise, it is about. Thirty dollars, I believe, Christie, per month, per vehicle, and it covers um. Things other than liability, we would still need to carry the liability insurance through the plan J P A. So um that would need additional analysis as to whether or not an insurance program. Through enterprise would be the best uh benefit to the city.
So I I don't.
The only other thing I'd like to add related to the insurance is that if we uh were to go with the enterprise program through our plan J P A in the current. Insurance plan we have for liability would not change.
Okay, so in the presentation that was uh that we had today, was the insurance factored into the cost there? Or is that, we assuming that's a baseline uh and it'll be same across the board for the most part?
It was not considered because of the fact that there would be no change between the two programs. Um and we did not analyze the enterprise option separately at this time.
Okay, um and then talk to me about maintenance agreements, I mean, are we, can we repair these on our own? Or how are these being, how's maintenance being handled?
Uh the the maintenance contract covers uh most maintenance other than like tire changes, oil changes, things of that nature. Um so.
Wear and tear stuff, right, okay, okay, um and then uh. In the future, and this is probably a question for Christie is, you know, w- we're we're marching towards, you know. A no fossil fu- fuel future. Were you guys, is enterprise looking towards uh making electric vehicles available as they come to market?
Yep, absolutely, um really, there's every make and manufacturer is available to um to American Canyon. Um we have the E Transit that we um that is available now, that you know, the big cargo van is available on a fully electric model. So I think that that's where we will start um with the elec- with the electric vehicles, but absolutely. You would have access to electric and any other alternative fuel vehicles that were in the marketplace.
Okay, and then final, final question, and this is similarly related to Vice Mayor Joseph's question. Um you know, we're entertaining this thing from enterprise and he asked for other um. Uh companies to to see if we could explore that, I would like to know and hear about, maybe this was in an earlier presentation, but I want to hear about other ci- cities. Who have been on this program for five years or longer, right, or new and get an understanding of. You know, where this has been successful with others and how they've saved money and if they're continuing to do it.
Absolutely, um I have been with enterprise for five years, so I personally have not worked with any cities that have. That have been here longer than five years, however, I will, I can speak to about other clients that we work with. Um the city of Pleasanton has been a partner of ours for, I believe it's now seven or eight years. Um have have, you know, replaced vehicles much like the schedule that we've been talking about here and continue to do so. Um somewhere recently that I have brought on board are that are that are close to you, city of Sassoon City. Um came on board two years ago with both police as well as public works. Again, very similar replacement plan, they're on our maintenance programs as well. Um and things have been, have been working very well for them. Um and then we work with Clear Lake, we work with Saint Helena as well. Do you have specific questions or or anything that you want me to hit on with each of these um cities?
No, I'm just trying to understand that, and I think I'm now recalling that because it's been a while, but um I think we ta- did talk about Pleasanton in the past.
Yeah, and and I will finally say too that Petaluma also came on board um just a little over a year ago. They actually came on board specifically for the electrification of their fleet, being able to to use alternative fuels and. Um having the flexibility to do that as soon as new technology hit the market. Um so they have been replacing vehicles as they can as those that new technology comes available.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Council ready for public comment? There is no objection, but the comment, what have we received on this matter?
Hmm, we have not received, uh we have no written comments received. And I see no hands raised at this time.
Good, very good, I'll close public comment, we'll return to council for the discussion, desired action. I think this is a good program to enter for us.
I would agree, I I I would also like to emphasize, just as Petaluma, that we really direct staff. To to look at those electric options uh and pursue that. I know there's been some pushback as far as police vehicles, but you know, we need to try to figure out where we can convert to electric. And certainly take advantage of that uh a shorter replacement cycle. In light of that, you know, the F one fifty electric truck is supposed to come out in the near future. Uh you know, I don't know what kind of a premium that'll be, but that might be something that we start looking at as. Kind of our baseline public works vehicle and to be able to jump onto that or other vendors, so. To emphasize the electric, electric vehicle conversion as much as possible.
Oh yeah, suddenly uh you see more evidence of that uh every day, I think, you know, there's far more electric hybrid. Uh on market and given the old the uh governor's desire for us to move to all electric in the near, very near future by comparison. Twenty thirty is not that far away in terms of life cycles that we're talking about, so uh yes, all electric is where we all should be.
And in terms of police, those Tesla dual engine S C Vs are pretty fast, they're always on the raceway.
All right. Uh no other uh comment from our council, is there a motion to. Direct the uh for the resolution?
I I'm gonna make that motion, even though I had a couple of questions and concerns, to think overall, it's good. Want to make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty one next in order. Resolution of the City Council of City American to transition to enterprise fleet management lease program.
I'll second it.
What's in second, roll call please?
Councilmember Abudamas?
Yeah.
Councilmember Ora?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you all. Our council meeting uh for our protocols, uh nearing ten o'clock, we have to make a decision to continue or. Uh continue items to the next meeting.
Let's continue.
I don't, I don't agree with Mark, since we have to go back into closed session, I'm ready.
I was gonna say, we still have a closed session to go.
I think we can at least, the the next item is not a decision item, but we wanted to at least plant the seeds of ideas. So I I think we can spin pretty quickly through the uh the presentation and if if the council wants to just take that information. Go back and and deliberate amongst yourselves about the ideas, it it's a lot of food for thought and we can certainly bring it back at it at another point, but. Um we did meet with the finance committee and and um, you know, we thought it would be good to at least share this information with you all. And you you could take it home and and think about it and bring an item back.
Other item on here is the uh, certainly you could have this drive sidewalk, there's a lot of anxious stuff this evening.
Right, uh that's what I was gonna say, I think if we're starting to move into borrowed time. I would much rather hear the eucalyptus discussion because I know there's people that have waited for that. The ARPA stuff is good stuff, but I think it's the one that should be continued.
I I agree with you because there's opera stuff that I've already been thinking about.
Yeah.
Um and and that that could get away from us and we'll be here till midnight, so.
Yeah. In that case, what we'll do is staff actually send over the presentation we're going to give to the council and to share it with you and and we'll pick it up another time.
Yeah, thank you. We probably need a motion to to uh continue the uh.
I I I'm moved to continue um uh items fourteen. Uh and sixteen seventeen, although I I think we can just move those and give an update this evening on the eucalyptus drive. Sidewalk gap closure update.
I'll second.
What's the second roll call?
Councilmember Abudamas?
Yes.
Councilmember Ora?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council. Well then move on to management staff oral reports, you could let this drive sidewalk, yeah, closure updates.
Yes, uh thank you, Mayor, um fireworks director Erica Smith is going to bump over here. And um write us with uh with an update.
Good evening. Hi, Mayor and fellow council members, um I just wanted to give you a presentation tonight, um or update on where we're at with the eucalyptus drive um sidewalk. Gap closure project um and I will want, want to share my screen, I can show you the plans that were attached to the um. The agenda tonight, um here we go. As you can see here, there was a plans established, preliminary plans, um I believe sometime late last year. Um this project was funded in two thousand eighteen um for approximately fifty three thousand dollars. Um with T D A three funds, uh which is a a distribution fund to um the North Bay agencies through M T C. Um and we received fifty three thousand dollars, um the preliminary plans show alignment based on an early alignment of. Eucalyptus Drive is established in the early two thousands that holds pretty clear to the the um. The original, like the roundabout at Teresa Drive and the overall connection to Highway twenty nine. Um so I just want to show that pre- the brief overview showing what we have here and the concerns we have with the current project. And I believe with my processers that we need additional right of way to make this project happen, um because we're not sure when. Um development will occur on the hillside um of the north side of Eucalyptus Drive. Um and when the future widening will occur, right now the funding for the T D A three is preliminary just. Right now, the funding for the TDA three is preliminary just for the sidewalk and not for any additional work on the opposite side of the street, so we need to hug the properties, um, the properties, um, and, and, and need additional take, um, of those properties um, to make this project happen. So let me switch over to the, the the actual um, schedule that we picked up. On July twenty-seventh, we received word that we had received additional forty, approximately forty-three thousand dollars of, or forty, additional funding up to a hundred and two thousand dollars from TDA three funds from the Naperville Transportation Authority. We applied in April, May of this year for the additional funding, knowing we would have shortfall to get this project completed. Um, we started work, um, on the final, I mean, of the plans you saw, um, we brought those up and to revisit them, since I, the first time I saw it was a couple of months ago. And to, um, get this project back going, once we received additional funding to do so. Um, the first steps will be, be updating these plans, finalizing in the next three weeks. Um, now that we have a school opening up at the other end of the, the Eucalyptus Drives, we need to really get this project done to ensure safe passage to the community and the school, um, you know, students that are gonna be accessing this, this road. Um, the, the hard, the hard stop that we're not, the variable happening here is how much land we're gonna, how long the right-of-way acquisition process will take. And I provided a preliminary schedule, um, based on arbitrary number of August second, uh, a week ago for the staff report. But the, the right-of-way acquisition has more details on the attachment I'm sharing tonight, showing the process that we have to go through if we can't make a, a amicable negotiations with the property owners. I was able to speak to one of three property owners yesterday. Um, that makes me feel that the city may have a, a positive approach with this process. Um, I'll need to make contact with the third property owner, um, and the individual I spoke with yesterday was the original, um, developer of these three parcels, um, in two thousand six, so. Um, if we can shorten up this huge window from, you know, if we ran concurrently from September sixth, um, the plat descriptions, and if we don't, we can avoid having to do the possession or hearing and the motions of necessity, um, which is, in other words, in eminent domain for public need. Um, the construction window could happen at any time. Um, the advertisement period, the minimum for local funds is two weeks, so we can shorten up this construction timeframe um, greatly if the property owner is on board, um, with the additional right-of-way needed to make it's a safe passage for motorized vehicle traffic and pedestrian traffic to and from, um, Eucalyptus Drive. So with that, I'll, I'll open up to any questions that city council members may have of this, or, or if they want to have a public comment on, on the matter.
How, how much property acquisition are we talking about?
Not sure, it might be five feet, additional five to eight feet along the frontage, uh, if I swap back over to it. What would be ideal, uh, my professional opinion would be to hug where the property is already naturally hugged, that their finished project frontages, um, there, it's interesting how their driveway stopped and it follows the natural curvature of Eucalyptus Drive as it is now. So if we're able to move that sidewalk inward to match where the current formal frontage stops, um, even though utility boxes are hugging the front of their, their conformed driveways at this point in time, so ideally, we, we'd be able to get the additional frontage from the, the, the plan you see now. Of course, we need to have these negotiations with the property owners um, and work with the, the surveyor on it. The surveyor, I spoke to the surveyor, they originally worked on this fifteen years ago, um, he believes it could take two to four weeks to get a legal plat description, once he has the plans from the city. And then the appraiser.
What about the house in the corner of Teresa and Eucalyptus?
Um, that line, we, we could, we could hold that line that is there now. Um, we own this, the property on the corner on the other side, so if we need to widen out a little bit to make, um, appropriate lane widths for traffic, we can make that line work.
But we can move that property line on the north side?
Yeah, as needed. It's, it's, it's really the three parcels shown in the picture here that it's a very tight spot, um, on the road as it is.
Yeah, I just was wondering the, uh, as you drive by, it's what, maybe three feet? Or less, maybe, that, uh, the house on the corner, I'm wondering, if you're gonna put the side, continue the sidewalk down to, uh, Teresa. It would seem to be you're gonna need property acquisition there.
Possibly, possibly, but, um.
Okay.
Ideally not. I thi, I believe I've been told it, it, it just works down there at the corner of Teresa.
Okay, all right. About the engineer.
Isn't that, but that's partly because we purchased the lot on, yes, the north side, so the
We're gonna move the street over a little bit.
Yeah, the, the street goes into their driveway a little bit, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Does that mean we're gonna lose the trees on, uh, on the north side there at the corner?
We'll investigate that further. At this point in time, I hadn't investigated, that was really about the, the parcels, um, on the choking point, um, further up the street.
Okay. Okay. That's also my question. Any other questions from council? We get some, uh, public comment on this matter?
We did, Mayor Garcia, we had, uh, six written comments from Allison Nagel, Beth Marcus, Charles Donald, Gianna Poussey, Kurt Healy, and Marilyn Gomes.
Was there a opposed or in favor?
I do not have those in front of me at this time. They were all sent out to everyone. I'm sorry, I, I don't have that.
I believe they were all in, expediting this work as soon as possible. I, I didn't read anything against it.
Yes, exactly.
No, I, I think I got to all of them, they were all wanting to have the project completed.
I do have, uh, one attendee who would like to comment, Cindy Beederman.
Surprise, I'm still awake.
Hello, welcome back.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna kind of venture to say that maybe you guys received some comments that were not sent to the comic, comment section through the, uh, city portal, probably went straight to your guys' emails, because I know I put your guys' emails on the letter. I also know that Senator Dodd's office got contacted, because I'm the one who contacted them. And we did get a response back from his representative, RT. Um, and that's how I was able to get the plans from him, so I appreciate that. Erica, I appreciate your, your, um, presentation, but I'm not getting a date of possible finishing. But what I am kind of upset about right now is I'm hearing from the presentation, if, I believe, I'm not sure. And I say that because this has been going on since two thousand, two thousand and three. I've been actively involved on this since two thousand and fourteen. It was in the budget in two thousand and eighteen. It was taken out of the budget in two thousand and nineteen, or excuse me, wasn't taken out of the budget, it was taken off the to-do list. So I'm still thinking, if we take away the two thousand and three to the two thousand and seventeen or eighteen, we still had three years to work on this. So you've had surveyors out there, but you're still not sure in what we're gonna do. Why don't we know about the acquisitions? We've known this for at least three years. So it seems like we should have been a little bit more up the speed on this. Because these are children walking. In the meantime, your presentation could include, it was, we have an, an elderly value view apartments there with elderly people, with veterans there with disabilities, who do, cannot walk to get to the nearest locations that they would like to get to. So that's where's my frustration. I've had to advocate this for seven years actively. And we're still really no closer than I was seven years ago. And it shouldn't have to take me to make all the fuss, all the letters, all the senators and everything else. And the reason why I got the senator notified on this was not to try to go behind anybody's back to say, hey, it's like, hey, now you can't renig on this again. Because it's too much out there, but I'm very frustrated, because it should not have gone to this level. These are kids, these were my grandchildren as well. I've received letters from other grandmas that walked their children or scared to walk their children. You know, I don't think, have you guys walked that? Have you brought your childrens down there? And you did notice that, yes, we have Nepo Junction School on the end of Eucalyptus. Erica, they just moved it there. Because see, at you could, the Nepo Junction was on the other end. And I had to cross it there. So this is not new, this should have been done. And yes, shame on all you guys, I'm, I'm serious, I'm very disappointed, because people that I'm talking to, the people that you see on the next door, they're just getting frustrated with, with the fact that our roads, our streets are not correct. And I know we're supposed to be a young city, I know we've had multiple managers, we've had multiple public works directors. And that might be part of our problem, because it also feels like it's kind of a cluster right now. But our streets and pathways for our community should be number one. That should be a priority. And I wish there was a way that we had a list, I talked to Mr. Holly about this yesterday, I believe it was, it might have been today, I don't remember. There should be a priority, what we can do, what the community can participate in, or at least tell you guys. Because the one feedback I got, like I shared with Holly, there was a gentleman that said, hey, it's not that he walks there. Do you know what? He drives home and he's scared to death because of the blind spot that he will hit a child.
Cindy, I'm sorry you've reached your time limit.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
See, I do have, Beth Marcus would like to speak.
Okay, pretty good.
I was wondering if I could give my three minutes to Cindy, because she was on a good roll right there. Because I am in total agreement with her. Is that allowable, Mr. Mayor?
I don't know, not that I'm aware of. Each individual has three minutes. But you've
So I'm sorry, are you saying that Cindy can't take my three minutes?
I don't know, we have a, can we address that?
Mr. Mayor, I believe it's at your discretion.
I need a, I need a, a, a feedback on that. I don't think we've had that before.
It, it's at your discretion, but I think the point is made.
Yeah, it's clear. How's the council feel about it?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I, I think David's right, the point's been made, I think it's up to us to take some action and move it forward as however we can.
Pretty good.
It does sound like the land acquisition is the critical path. And it's entirely possible that that may be, you know, something we can work out easier than we thought.
Yeah, I, I agree as well. I think, um, Cindy has been the, the advocate for all those who couldn't stay up late tonight to, to say what they wanted to say, and I think we're, we all have read those comments and, and we know the importance for the safety for the children to walk down that path, so, um, we get it.
No. Now, do you want to, I want to continue?
Is that me still? Oh, okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Now, I'm in total agreement with Cindy, and she's right. Those, those, um, people who live in those houses have been approached before, so I don't know what the holdback is on that. And there is so many blind spots on there, you're going up the hill or even down the hill. And as I stated in my letter, there may be a time when there's a group of kids walking together to school, because the parents don't want them walking singly. And, and they may be going out into the highway and people don't see them, and it's just a big a big, uh, catastrophe that could happen. And I know it's down the road when Rick builds his, builds his project, and then, you know, you're gonna have that traffic as well. So I'm just encouraging this to get, um, done sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. You have another speaker?
Hmm. Um, Mayor Garcia, I have Karen. There we go. Okay, Karen, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to state that I'm in agreement with Beth and Cindy. Um, I know Cindy's passion has run very deep on this subject. And I too have had to be extremely careful driving along there as to not hit someone, either a children walking or someone in a wheelchair. So I think the quicker you guys can get this going, the better off everyone in the community will be for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, can I get your last name, please?
Fritz, F-R-I-T-Z.
Thank you. There are no other hands raised at this time?
I think I'll post a public comment on the matter with the council. So we have an update now. And, uh, again, chart projecting a timeline for it, and I think we all I'm speaking for everyone, I think it's, we need to move forward on this matter expeditiously. If the, uh, pedestrian walk to school, as we all are aware, it's gonna change considerably. Used to be, uh, those closer to the the older Nepo Junction School had a more direct path. And those who lived up on Cookie Hill had to traverse this area of concern. Now, uh, the kids who live on Cookie Hill are gonna be going north overwards, or west overwards to the school on sidewalk. And those who, uh, now have to traverse this, uh, this area of concern, uh, lived down in the, uh, Central Del Mar section. So it's kind of reversed itself in terms of which part of the community walks to what that school. And, uh, so I look at a map of the city, find out what the, uh, alternate route might be. Uh, it's very convoluted, it's much further out of the way going, uh, from east to west. So I think the, uh, and we, that's a reason for me why we need to move forward on this expeditiously as possible.
Mr. Mayor, I would concur, and I'm wondering, the most immediate next step then, uh, Director Smithies is to get the, finalize the plans and get the surveys so that we can approach the property owners and say, this is the exact amount of take we need?
Correct. Um, the plan is to modify this existing plan to get what the city needs, to make that a safe connection for traffic and for pedestrians. And then get the, um, surveyor started, and appraiser started, and also work with the property owners immediately with showing them the updated plans. So hopefully we can walk hand in hand together and get this work done, and get this project done as soon as possible. The easy part's the construction, it's really gonna be the property negotiation.
Okay, and, and I think, I don't know if the city manager is able to track down the original approvals, whether or not, because of, you know, unfortunately, I'm the culprit here, uh, by not requiring the sidewalk when it was built, so. But the condition was that when the time came, they would have to pay for it. So there may be some leverage in terms of, you know, paying for it might just be the right-of-way and to facilitate that transfer, particularly since I think they're sensitive to, uh, how critical this is as well, so hopefully things can work out.
We can locate those conditions of approval and review them and, and use the, um, use them as part of the conversation.
Thank you. Great, well, thank you for the update, appreciate the work on it, yeah. Please keep us, uh, apprised of progress.
Will do.
All right, uh, so we're moving on now to, uh, uh, closing this meeting and re-adjourney in a closed session. If it's appropriate, I would, uh, like to take this moment now to adjourn the open session. Memory of the West family and their contributions to American. Uh, they have been very longtime residents. And have done so much and made, uh, many sacrifices to in support of our nation. I knew, I had to do, uh, council over Ed West very well, uh, as he was a council member. And certainly, uh, tragically, his, uh, killed in action in Iraq. Ed West was a young man who, uh, thought a lot of this community, he was a lifeguard. And, uh, he thought a lot about wanting to serve this country, so he, he joined the Marine Corps. And, uh, anyway, tonight, I would just like to recognize all the contributions to the family. But closing, uh, this open session now, and we will re-adjourn in a closed session. Thank you all.
Are we gonna use this link as the first closed session, Jason?
Yeah, so you want to just go back and use that, that same link we used for the earlier closed session of the appropriate?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you are in a closed session?
Night, American.
Night. All right.
Night, everyone.
Recording stopped.